Let's move on to Council Budget Review. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, councilors. It's good to have you with us again tonight for your second night of budget deliberations, if you will. Just as a brief follow-up, if we could, we had a couple lingering questions that we looked into in the interim today pursuant to -- some real brief updates, if we could. Zalima had one and Tracy had one, right? Was there anybody else? No? Okay. If I could, Mr. Mayor, defer to Zalima, then Tracy.
Yes, please. We're going to hear from Zalima all night long, so let's just get the party started.
This will be very quick. So I actually had two homework assignments, so to speak. One was regarding the capital investments at the golf course. We're still gathering that data, so that will go in an info packet, if that's okay. And then, Mayor, the other homework was regarding night skiing and its performance over the last two seasons. And so, number for total profit after we accounted for all the expenses in FY '22, so last two seasons ago, just under $29,000. This last winter in FY '23, $51,877.
Wow, and that's after electricity, the whole deal?
Yep, that's after accounting for all the expenses.
That is astounding, to say the least. Yeah, that's amazing. Can you imagine making money in your first couple of years doing something? So congratulations, that's great. Thank you for the information. And Tracy?
All right. So the follow-up that I had was the percentage increase on the property insurance, our property premium. So that is an increase of 62%. And that is due to the combination of having, one, the worst worldwide loss with property insurance on record, and then the second component of that is due to risk management, assessing all of our city-owned buildings, equipment, and structures for accurate values that we then put on our Schedule of Values to submit to WORM to have coverage. So in an event of a loss, we would be covered for those structures. So that total amount of value that increased was part of that 62% premium increase. So that was that. We actually had a 7% decrease on the liability premium. And that was because even though yesterday I had said that we had the increase of the payroll cost, which is true, we actually did better on our claims loss on the liability side. So that factored in, so that we had a 7% decrease on the liability premium. So really, the bulk of that is on the property premium of the 62% increase.
So a combination of increase in premiums and increase in the valuation of our buildings and actually finding some buildings that we didn't even have insurance on, correct? So kudos to you. That's why I was pointing out, you did a good job on that, so thank you. It's certainly not getting us in a good spot to have properties that we own that aren't even insured, so. So good work on staff's part.
Well, Mr. Mayor, one of the points that I thought was warranted with regard to this particular discussion, even though this increase really is frustrating in terms of the amount of money we're having to try to contend with.
Agreed.
Mr. Nelson pointed out that indeed the city is kind of taking a gold standard approach as it relates to making sure we're doing this correctly and without ways in which we could be ultimately found fault in and so forth. And I do appreciate that, even though I hate the increase. I mean, it's awful, you know?
Certainly.
Doing it right is a better course.
Well, the good thing is we found a way to come to the table with what we needed and still have a balanced budget, so.
Yes, sir.
So that is always a good sign for us.
You betcha.
Okay. Anything else on budget review?
Any other lingering questions that maybe we should have been doing homework on that we didn't capture just now? Anything else that perhaps we need to double up on? I think we're good then, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. All right, we are going to, I'm sure you have a schedule of tonight's events, but we have quite a few people here, so we're going to jump over your aquatic roof right now and go straight to the MRG request. And that way, we can give these folks the time they need and then cut them loose. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, and thanks to our guests for being here tonight. It's good to have you back. As Council requested, this is the second opportunity to dive into this MRG discussion and hopefully get some direction from the Council that we can hand off to our partners and move forward with. And as you recall, Mr. Mayor and councilors, our partners here that we're talking about is the Fly Casper Alliance. And they're made up, obviously, of a number of stakeholders here that are united for the purpose of trying to improve the flight economy, if you will, in and out of our community. The question before you is whether or not Council is comfortable with the idea of providing some funding that would satisfy a partnership interest with respect to participating in the MRG and the amount of $50,000 with the county and with the Alliance. And Council certainly had a differing set of views and opinions pursuant to the last discussion that we had in this regard. Without a doubt, there certainly is a number of ways that Council could consider this. $50,000 is what's in front of you in terms of the corpus request from the Alliance on behalf of this program. And that number, of course, is negotiable, I would assume, with regard to what it is Council decided they want to do. But the other thing that Council could consider as an alternative, if indeed the idea of the MRG is just really not in line with what it is Council sees as an appropriate direction. The Alliance has a lot of objectives that they are trying to pursue that would indirectly benefit not only flight activity in the community, but done in such a way that theoretically and ostensibly would reduce the need for an MRG into the future. And so, some of the things that I remember the Alliance talking about, and they certainly can, you know, expound upon this way better than I, is in relation to marketing activities that they would undertake on behalf of the larger effort in our community, in our county. That will not be done for free. That will require funding and financial commitments from somewhere. I know they're doing a fun run here coming up. I didn't miss it, did I?
No, you did not.
Okay. I probably will. Gross. Heads up. But, you know, those kinds of things do help in terms of raising money, but probably won't cover the gap with regard to a lot of the ambitions that this Alliance has. And so, my suggestion would be that if you're looking for an alternative that feels a little better, giving some funding to the Alliance to help with the indirect efforts that would not be a direct support of the MRG program would certainly help the flight economy in our community broadly, might not be a bad alternative to consider. And then certainly, of course, the last option would be doing absolutely nothing, right? And not at this time being a partner at all. So I wanted to give you a taste for some direction Council could go so that you had some other things to think about and consider and potentially pursue.
Very good. So I will start this by saying, and this will be no surprise to anyone, and I've thought about it even more, I've met with Mr. Januska, and I cannot, in good faith, use, get behind using taxpayer money to subsidize a billion-dollar company. I just can't do it. When people want to get their shit together and stop supplying air service to Riverton and Cody and Sheridan and Rock Springs, so that every single town in our state has their own airport and every one of them are subsidizing this airline, they're feasting off of taxpayer money in all these communities. When we could eliminate all of them, have one airport in Casper, people wouldn't have to drive more than two hours from anywhere in the state of Wyoming to get on a commercial flight. And until that happens, this is the problem we're going to be in. And I remember you folks brought us the budget versus actual history, and they turned in a request for $441,000 for the first quarter. To me, that's just utterly ridiculous. It's so outrageous. And then I look at the fact that the county's funding them, Advance Casper's funding them, Fly Casper's funding them, right?
No, not.
Okay. Visit Casper.
Advance Casper, yeah. Advance Casper built up the Fly Casper. So there is some affiliation there, the money that are going to the MRG or coming out of the Advance Casper private.
And Visit Casper also, right?
Visit Casper has some, maybe some marketing dollars that they can use, but they're not supporting the MRG specifically.
Well, and you can tell me that the money coming from Advance Casper is coming out of the private side of things, but Advance Casper still receives municipal money. They receive taxpayer money. And they may not be using it for the MRG, they're using it for something else, but they're still funded by taxpayer money.
So just to point of clarity on that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the city, the public funding that you speak of goes to the operations side of that. The private, when I mentioned private, that's membership dollars, like we have $10,000 board seat members, we have other companies that contribute money to be a part of Advance Casper, and that's the board that elected to use those. Those are, like, the Economic Development Joint Powers Board is a completely different pot than the Advance Casper.
No, I totally understand it. I just, and I'm, trust me, I'm trying real hard not to be a Negative Nancy here, but they are a $1.2 billion company, literally feasting off of every community in the state of Wyoming, pulling their tax dollars, under the threat that they're going to pull air service if we don't fund them. And when I get a chart from them that says this is how much, I mean, it runs on an average of, that $441,000, that's over half, that's just for one quarter. That's over half of the two-year budget before that. So when does this stop? The problem is, it's not going to. It's never going to stop, and they're always going to threaten, and they're going to say, "If you don't give us the money, we're pulling out." And I can't, I just can't do it. There are $800,000 of county money, which is our Casper citizens' tax money. Casper citizens make up the largest portion of Neptuna County tax. They're already getting our tax money, as far as I'm concerned. Now, our board may feel differently than I do, and I do understand the economic impact. I understand the ability to attract businesses, you know, but I just, I can't get behind this. I just can't do it. It's not frugal with taxpayer money. It's just, and when I was elected, I promised I would be fiscally conservative, and that's not what this is. It's just not. And that's kind of where I'm at with it. I'm sorry. I know it's not what you wanted to hear from me, and I apologize for that, but I really don't, because I answer to 70,000 people, and I will promise you this, I've had more emails telling me this is baloney than I've had say, "Keep it." So, and those are the people that, you know, that we have to listen to, and I'm not running for reelection, so, you know, I don't necessarily, I'm not swayed by anything other than just my own conscience. And I just can't, I can't see my way through it. But I could very easily get behind giving $50,000 to Fly Casper, as long as there was a caveat that that money was not to be used for that MRG. So in other words, for your marketing and your ability to try to get more butts in the seat or whatever it is you're trying to do, I could get behind that. But I just can't subsidize a billion-dollar company. I mean, who's next? The guy that brings our, you know, our ferret for our water, you know? Hey, man, need a million bucks to stay in business here so I can keep hauling your stuff. You know what? No, guess what? There's other people that haul that stuff, and there's other people that fly planes too, so.
I thought you said ferret, and that scared me. I'm sorry. We wouldn't fund that, don't we?
I'm on the Joint Powers Water Board, so I'm very familiar with our chemical, but anyway, Kyle, go ahead.
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, guys, for being here with us tonight. This is still something I don't feel super informed with. I apologize. I know some of you all offered to spend some personal time with me, and I never took you up on that opportunity. I've been trying to do some independent research to inform myself a little bit further. So I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, so that I can help educate myself. First one, in the kind of one sheet that you guys gave us in the initial presentation, there was a line about businesses go away, people go away, no new businesses come in due to lack of air service and communities languish. I was curious, have you had any conversations, probably Justin, you're probably the most appropriate person, but maybe Glenn as well, have you had any businesses indicate to you that if SkyWest were to pull their flights from the airport, that would put them in a position where they would have to relocate their business, or it would have any other sort of perceived economic impact?
Oh, not businesses, but I have had a few conversations with individuals that basically lean on specifically that SkyWest flight to Salt Lake, where their headquarters are, and they have, you know, satellite positions here. As far as like the Fozlocks and the other, that we've had success in recruiting here, I don't know if they're really that informed as to where we are in that process, right? Where they could voice one way or the other.
Okay. I don't have, like, real articulated questions, so I apologize as I wade my way through this. But one of the things that I was finding in my independent research was the fact that this Essential Air Service was created in 1978, and it sounds like at that time it was expected to be a temporary measure, a bill signed by Jimmy Carter deregulated airlines, phased out the Civil Aeronautics Board, and now as a result of that, it seems, four airlines control 80% of the market. Breeze Airlines is the only one to start operations in the last 14 years, according to a January Time article. So I guess to echo some of the mayor's sentiment, the Essential Air Service was created, what was that, 50, 45, 50 years ago, was expected to be temporary, it still continues to this day, I believe, and I believe Wyoming benefits from it. So same with this kind of minimum revenue guarantee, I guess I'm still looking for some sort of assurances that this is not a program that's just going to continue in perpetuity. I guess I don't feel like I've been fully convinced of that, and so I was hoping if you guys had any information to help provide some assurances, that's what I would be looking for this evening.
So Airline Deregulation Act in 1978, as you said, that was one of the concerns at that time, that if the government deregulated the airlines, that small communities were going to lose service. So that's the Essential Air Service program, and you're right, there was a sunset clause after 10 years, and we're way past 1978, 1988, and it has not gone away. So the need, at least for that program, shows that if you want to continue to have service in small communities, that would not be economically viable without the government's support, that that was going to end up happening. There is absolutely no guarantee that we would ever see an end in sight with the minimum revenue guarantee. All I can tell you is, up until November of 2020, excuse me, when we first started this program, we did not have a minimum revenue guarantee. We were the only airport in the state that did not, including Jackson Hole, that did not have some level of subsidized service. And we want to certainly get to the point where we don't have to have this. As the mayor says, if we continue to be more successful with air services and drawing more people here, if we do more marketing, then we have more likelihood that we're going to build that service. I can tell you, looking at the third quarter of this year, which is when Delta's going to bring in, or SkyWest's going to bring in a bigger airplane, a 76-passenger airplane, the economics on that is the airplane is more expensive to fly, but it has 26 extra seats to sell. So what SkyWest did in their projections is they were looking for, on a 76-passenger airplane, 54% load factor, 54% of the seats being full in July, 50% of August, and 48% in September. If you hold all of the variables the same and just change the passengers, five more passengers per flight in July, eight more passengers per flight in August, and 10 more passengers per flight in September would make that service break even. So that's what we're hoping for, and based upon our load factors, passengers that have used the service, we think that we're probably getting closer to about a 65% load factor. So I think that there's the opportunity. I don't think that we were even supportive of continuing on the 50-passenger airplane in perpetuity. We said, for the community to support any of this, we need to have something different. And the something different is the larger airplane. So I can't tell you, nobody can tell you what's going to happen in the third quarter, fourth quarter, and beyond this year. I can tell you, and, you know, it could be, I mean, take what SkyWest says, however you want to say it, is if they are actually going to lose money in the service, they're not going to continue to fly. I think they became a profitable company because they don't fly in the markets that they don't make money. I mean, no business would do that. So why are they profitable? Because they don't serve markets where they're losing money. If they make the determination that they're going to lose money in their market, trust me, between airplane availability and pilots, they have a lot of other markets that they can move those assets into. So I think that there's an opportunity to see a change going forward. And I can't tell you, and I would certainly never tell you anything that I think is going to happen unless I actually believe it was going to happen. I can tell you, I think it's going to get better. I just can't tell you what's going to happen six months down the road with the airline industry.
Thanks, Glenn. Thanks, Bruce. Glenn, I was hoping you might be able to, I appreciate all that information, and in my research, I have found it seems like the 50-seat airplane, the economics of it are just, you know, it seems like that's the crux, and it's just really hard to make the economics work for that size of airplane. So that's all in line with what I found. We got a lot of emails from pilots, which kind of surprised me. I probably, I don't, I think they got, sent them to all of us, but probably eight or so pilots that advocated for the program because they said they live in Casper, and I don't quite understand the logistics of all of it, but they are airplane pilots that need this flight to connect to Salt Lake or Denver, wherever, to do their job. Could you enlighten me a little bit about, I didn't have the opportunity to connect with all those folks, could you enlighten me about how that works when somebody is a pilot based out of Casper? How they go about their job, like, what that looks like when they're needing to get to these kind of main hubs to fly their planes from there?
So not knowing specifically the people that reached out to you, and they're, I'll give you two different scenarios. One's a United and one's a Delta. We have a Southwest Airlines pilot that lives here who basically flies for Southwest Airlines out of Denver. So in his particular case, he lives here, he has the flight benefits, he can go down the United flight, provided there's a seat available to fly into Denver, and basically he gets on a Southwest Airlines plane, and that's how he does business. So his domicile is Casper, but he basically, his base of operations is Denver. We have other pilots that live here, they're called fractional ownership, like NetJets, which is an aircraft that you can charter, or a company may have a 10% interest in a corporate jet. Those airplanes are not necessarily located here. So if you are a NetJet pilot and the airplanes are in Salt Lake City, and so you need to be able to take that airplane and fly from Salt Lake City to Albuquerque to pick up a passenger, or to take passengers from Salt Lake City to Albuquerque, you can do this. You get on a commercial plane that takes you to Salt Lake City, you get off that plane, and that's where you end up getting your aircraft that you're going to be flying. So those are people who can live in a community like Casper, where the aircraft that they're going to be flying are based at different airports. I think that's maybe what you're, what those pilots are alluding to.
I believe you're right, and several of them mentioned NetJets, so, yep, I think you're right. That's it for right now.
Please inform the colleagues. So, you know, it's, as much as I don't like feeling like we're being held hostage to something like this, I think that it's also important to kind of think about it in a different aspect. We're willing to subsidize other things with hopes that we're going to make the money up. You know, hockey, Hogadon, I mean, the list is endless. So if we think about it as if, and I think that maybe if we had a bigger plane, as these folks have said, that, you know, that should balance the numbers out, but giving them the chance to try to make that up right now, we're not, we're not even giving them the chance to see if that larger plane is going to actually make the numbers work. And so, it's, plus, I personally have moved in so many families from the West Coast over the last two or three years that moved here because of this airport. They have to be in a place because they were able to keep their jobs where they came from. They have to live near an airport. And so, they do fly out and they use this airport. And so, so it's not just the pilots, it's just that we have a lot, a lot of people that have moved to this community from the West Coast that needs this airline. And so, I think that we should give them the $50,000 to see if this larger plane is going to make this work.
Well, with all due respect, the county has given them enough money to get through July to find out if the plane is going to work, without us having to give any money. Go ahead, Glenn.
They have given money through July 1st. The plane, larger plane goes into service in July 7th. So everything that we've done, the county has done to get us to July 1 is with the 50-passenger airplane. We won't see the success of the larger airplane until we look at the third quarter of this year.
So if I'm right, the county gave you $800,000, so they're going to burn that in six months?
The projected loss, it was $880,000 roughly, the projected loss for that first six months. The service is doing better than that, and that's what the county's commitment was. The state is contributing 40% of that, so that's not the total county commitment. It's what the county signed the contract for. The state, in essence, pays, reimburses 40% of that cost.
So there will be money to go through and find out if this plane is going to work or not? No?
To get that plane here.
We would need to be able to look at how to fund the third quarter of this year.
I see. Well, even if we gave you $50,000, that's not going to fund the third quarter.
But my hope is, the $50,000 for the council, the council wanted to do this. What has happened traditionally with the minimum revenue guarantee is the service has been more successful than what they project. So between savings for money not spent for the first six months, plus potentially the $50,000, plus potentially some other community partners, would be enough to get us through the third quarter, because we believe that the third quarter, the projections for the third quarter is going to be better than what we saw with the first two quarters of this year because of the larger airplane.
I would be remiss if I didn't say, if I ran my business the way they do, I wouldn't even be able to eat at night. I don't know how they're doing it, other than living off of the taxpayers. And they're doing it in every community, because if I ran that business, the only air service I would have would come into Casper, Wyoming. People would drive here, and my planes would be full every day. And that's the ridiculous part of it all. And as long as these communities are going to keep shoveling of money, they're going to keep playing this game. Why wouldn't they?
Glenn, it sounds like, you mentioned a couple sort of like break-even points. So it sounds like maybe some additional projections have materialized since the last time that we spoke, and I'd be interested if you could speak any further to that, like what we've, like best-case, worst-case scenario. I mean, I guess worst-case scenario is, it never breaks even, right? But like, you know, what's the most likely scenario and what's the, you know, best-case scenario in terms of when you think that this will start to break even?
So right now, what SkyWest has done is they shared what they think is going to happen in the third quarter, and the third quarter is, will be the first quarter that we will have the larger airplanes. So we are looking at probably what they're projecting is about a $200,000 loss for the quarter. That's where, when you look at how they project the cost, obviously, you figure out what the revenue is going to be, certain number of passengers times X number of dollars for the revenue, and they figure out what the expenses are. So they project what they think the load factor is, how many people are going to be on the board that plane, and what the fare is going to be. That's why when I said they are looking at, and I have it on my phone, they are looking at the 54%, the 50%, and the 48% load factors. So they say, if we have 54% of the passengers, the seats full in July with this fare, and we look at these expenses, and we do that for those three quarters, we think that we're going to lose $200,000. But the sensitivity analysis is five more passengers on average in July takes you from a loss for that quarter to a profit. And what we did see when we first started to do this with the MRG for November and December, and then going into the beginning of the following year, is we had months that there was a credit, that the credit for the service goes then, applies against the loss for 10 other months. So we did see a period of time where they had projected a loss, a larger loss, and the service did a lot better. But, you know, again, we don't know what that's going to be, we just know what the numbers are. I think that we're going to have better numbers than that. So I think that we have a possibility that we're going to be moving towards self-sufficiency, but I can't tell you when that's going to happen. There's other variables, fuel prices. If fuel prices go up, the expense portion of that break even goes up. Fuel prices go down, jet fuel prices go down. If fuel prices go down, jet fuel prices go down, then we're doing better. We default on our, you know, I mean, if we go into a recession, I mean, it's a crapshoot. But at least we have numbers that show what SkyWest thinks, and I think that they're being more pessimistic based upon past history because we have outperformed what they have done, what they've shown in the past.
And have they projected out any further than third quarter? Or is that where we, what we've got?
They have not beyond the third quarter. I will tell you, Aeronautics Commission has taken up to 40%, and they have committed to 40% for the third quarter, so we have that portion. So if it's a $200,000, we're really looking at $120,000 of non-state money to cover that first, that third quarter of this year. That's why, again, the $50,000 potential savings from what the county doesn't spend and the other partners, we're hoping is going to be enough to cover that third quarter. The third quarter is going to be telling. I mean, if the third quarter is worse than what we expect it to be, then you think, well, what's that going to do for the fourth quarter? If the third quarter turns out to be better, you know, it's hard to be able to project without actually having the aircraft in the market for experience.
Mr. Bond?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I have a couple of questions. First, my first question is, does the city or county have a current MRG arrangement with United Airlines? To serve Casper?
Mr. Mayor, no, they do not.
They do not, okay. I'm a frequent flyer on both United and Delta, so I was just wondering. And then my second question is about the, you mentioned something, I think, Glenn, you were mentioning something about the number of full flights or like, the capacity, percentage of capacity or whatever. Do we have data that's pretty readily available about? And so I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, if we don't have an MRG agreement with United, is United feeling like their flights are profitable? I mean, I can't think of the last time I was on a United flight coming in or out of Casper that wasn't jammed full. So I, I just raises a lot of questions in my mind about what the differences are. And then secondly, kind of what, you know, what is the data about, you know, the capacity? Are the flights, the current Delta flights that come into Casper just not full? They go in and out of Casper, they're not full, and so that's where the MRG needs to kick in? And so I don't know if that's reflected in that, in that history sheet, the history fact sheet you gave us or not.
Sure. So I might try to answer the second part first. So the, in terms of the, you know, flights being full does not need profitability. I mean, when Allegiant Airlines left, people are like, you know, the planes were 90% full. You can fly to Chicago for $10 round trip and fill the plane all day and not be profitable. So when we look at the load factors specifically with United, I think the reason why United has not asked for any minimum revenue guarantees, they fly four flights per day right now. If they wanted to, if they're not profitable on four flights, and the load factor, let's say, is running, let's say, 65%, they take one flight out of the market and they make all the passengers fly on three flights, and they increase their capacity or their load factor up to 85%. So I think it's a little bit different with United because United has the ability to control the supply of seats, and the revenue for that follows. When you have one flight per day, you, you know, you can't really control the seats. Either you fly the seats or you don't fly the seats. What I can tell you for you, Delta specifically, is the last time we had two flights into the market was last November and December. In fact, the service last year was doing so well that SkyWest said, do you want to see about the possibility of having two flights? And in November, you have Thanksgiving, December you have Christmas, so it seemed like a good time to do this. So we're running about 65% load factors, or 65 passengers out of 100 seats. If you apply that to this service on the 76-passenger airplane, the equivalent, I think that turns out to be, that's roughly a 65% load factor. So that's the reason why I'm thinking if you take the most recent history with two planes and you move that forward to one larger plane, I think the load factors are going to be higher than what they're projecting. If the load factors are higher than what they're projecting, then I think we get a lot closer to self-sufficiency on day one. We just don't know what that's going to be. So hopefully, that answered the question on MRG with United and kind of the history and what we expect with the Delta service.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn.
Do you have any more questions? Questions, Mr. Camroth?
Thanks, Bruce. Thanks, Glenn, for the information. I was curious, could you speak about, you seem to not know a lot of the ins and outs of the industry. How do airlines establish their fares? The same Time article I was referencing earlier, which mentions Cheyenne quite a bit, because Cheyenne, I believe, provides a minimum revenue guarantee to SkyWest for their 50-passenger jet, 2.3 million a year. But this Time article mentioned that in the past year, airfare prices went up 25%. The biggest jump since the Federal Reserve began tracking the index in 1989. Meanwhile, the amount of money the airlines were making per passenger mile has risen 84% since 2002. I was hoping you could help enlighten me a little bit about how they establish those fares because my concern is, it feels like, based on what I'm reading, what I'm seeing is a lot of companies are taking advantage of this post-COVID inflationary period to justify rising expenses while having record quarterly earnings and stock buybacks. And everyone at the top of the pyramid seems to be benefiting while it's being subsidized by the folks at the bottom. I hope that's not the case with this. I'm hoping you can educate me a little bit about how those airfare prices are set. Thank you.
So if we had four hours, I could probably start to give you a thumbnail sketch, but I'll try to give you the real quick. Airline seats are perishable commodity like a hotel room. You would think if you walk up to an hotel room and a hotel room has 50 rooms available at night, they would be willing to get any revenue for those hotels, those rooms available because after that night goes beyond, there's nothing. So it's a perishable commodity. There's not a rhyme and reason between what they charge per seat. You can't take the revenue and divide by a certain number of miles and come up with this. It's what somebody is willing to pay for the seat. So when you're onboard an airplane, look around at everybody around you, nobody probably paid the same fare that you did, even if they're sitting on a similar seat. So the airlines look at this and they say, we're going to start booking tickets up a gear out, and we have the cheapest fares available. And if you buy those two seats that are the cheapest fares, then they go to the next fare bucket. The next person who buys them is going to pay more. And as you get closer to the time, you would think that if they have seats available, they'd want to give them away. Well, they always have a business traveler, and that business traveler that absolutely has to get out of Casper to make that business deal needs to be able to fly out. And they'll pay $2,000 round trip for that ticket because they absolutely have to get out there. So the airlines will keep seats available and not sell those just so that they have the availability. But it's largely its supply and demand. It's what people are willing to pay and the availability of seats. The more seats that we have available, the more less expensive seats that there are for people to be able to purchase. But it's supply and demand, and you can't look at this. You will find times when it's less expensive to fly from Casper to Chicago through Denver than it is to get on that plane in Denver to go to Chicago. You go, well, that doesn't make any sense at all. And a lot of times, it doesn't make sense. They're using computers to program based upon people's booking habits to be able to set what those prices are. But that's a lot, but I mean, that's largely how they do this. I will tell you one thing, when you look at the revenue for the MRG, SkyWest flies the plane back and forth to Salt Lake City. If you go to Salt Lake City, all the revenue back and forth to Salt Lake City, SkyWest gets because they have the cost for the plane. If you fly passengers to San Diego, SkyWest gives all of the revenue to Salt Lake City, and they get a portion of what's called the beyond revenue. Because if they didn't fly those passengers to Salt Lake City, Delta would not get the revenue from the Salt Lake City person to go to San Diego. So that's, when we look at the MRG, that's the revenue portion that SkyWest gets. He has all of the revenue to Salt Lake City and a portion of the beyond. That's, so when people set the fares and I say, this is how much money they're getting, they're like, well, they're getting a lot more than that. Well, SkyWest isn't. Delta's getting some of that revenue. Thank you.
All right, we need some direction requests here from this council to decide. And if you're comfortable in doing so, or we can certainly wait until we have everybody here to make this decision. I'm okay either way. I'll leave it to you. Thoughts? I'm dead set against it, so I'm not against giving the money to Fly Casper for marketing. But I am dead set against giving taxpayer money to a billion-dollar company. I just can't do it. Go ahead.
In regards to us potentially pushing the date, I thought we had sort of, we were up kind of against a deadline already, and so I was curious if it's even able to be pushed at this point. That's my question.
Can you speak to that? Justin?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I'm just going to make a clarifying point as to the other things that Fly Casper Alliance is working on in addition to the MRG that you alluded to that maybe might be a more palatable funding, in addition to the marketing. We have a, we're setting up a scholarship program. And I think Tasma or Casey can speak more eloquently to this, if I could have them kick in.
So we're setting up a scholarship program for kids who are in the aviation program at Casper College to offset their flight costs. And the first fundraiser for this is the Run the Runway Run on June 16th. And those funds, well, students can apply for a grant from those funds and will pay Rising Wings, which is where they take their flight school at, directly to offset just the cost of renting the airplane and the gas to get their hours that they need to get through their program at Casper College. And the other thing that we're working on is interstate air service, which is a pie-in-the-sky idea. It's really necessary in this state. And it could really change the dynamics of the whole state if people can fly around and get from one community to another, especially in the dead of winter when we've got big storms like we did this past winter. That's a really big project. It's going to take quite a while to ferret that out, but it's part of our lofty goals that we're working on and taking on to provide our community and the whole state with better air service and trained pilots. You know, we have Scottsdale Gold who's come in here, and they need to increase FedEx and UPS flights to get their gold in and out of here. And it's a perfect opportunity for these students to, they can fly those flights to get the hours they need to be hired by a commercial airline. And, you know, we're hoping that any grant that we give them would require them to stay in the state for a period of time after they receive the grant so that we have more availability of pilots, so that companies like Scottsdale Gold come to Casper and bring their employees, which they've done, and use their air service. And we have an opportunity, not just for the kids to get through flight school at Casper College, but then to have jobs that will give them the necessary hours to become commercial airline pilots.
Justin, what's our timeframe?
For which?
Well, for an answer like this, is there, are we up against the wall on this, or where are we exactly?
For the MRG specifically, if SkyWest is going to be looking at service for the third quarter, they can't make a decision on putting service in place at the end of June because they have to load it into the schedule. So for the $50,000 specifically for the MRG, we're pretty close to having to be able to have some type of a commitment. I think for the marketing, there's a lot more flexibility in that regard.
I would simply add that the pilots that had reached out to you, Council, it's surprising to me, the community that we have around that already, in that we're trying to address it as a whole, workforce. We also are working on a mechanics portion of that as well, so airplane, the maintenance and the instrumentation and the flight tower. It's just an asset that we have as a community that we want to, you know, hang on to. And the MRG is the biggest fire in the room, and it's what we've spent our lion's share of stuff on. But even if you wanted to do a portion toward that and a portion toward our other efforts, you know, it's to the council.
Okay. I have no suggestion to offer you. So if one of you would like to make one, I will certainly entertain it. But I'm not, again, I just, I can't do it. I just can't. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I apologize. I know we have an agenda we try to stick to, but y'all should know me better by now. To the mayor's point earlier about the number of communities in our state that have airports and airlines, Glenn, could you speak to what sort of coordination or collaboration, if any, there is between the air service providers in the state? Because I would agree, it doesn't make sense for all of our communities to have this individualized, siloed approach to try to keep airlines to their communities. It makes sense to me, with Casper's central location in the state, to work with our partnering municipalities, our surrounding municipalities to pool resources and enhance air service out of Casper. It doesn't make sense to me for a dozen Wyoming communities to all be struggling to find this MRG money. Could you, so could you speak to what sort of statewide efforts, if any, are going on to help streamline and make more efficient our airline service?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, I'll jump in front of Glenn, not because I know the answer to your question. But I think from our perspective, you know, Fly Casper Alliance was born from the very first MRG request. And it has become the monster that we have kept in the closet for as long as possible. What we are asking today is for the city to help us get to the point where we can actually get rid of the monster that is the MRG. We're not in a position to continue to do this, to keep Delta here. If they don't figure out how to make themselves profitable in Casper with our help, with Fly Casper Alliance's help, we're going to market. We're going to build a better relationship with SkyWest through the pilot and through the mechanic programs, the scholarship programs. We are looking at exactly what you're talking about. Casper being the solution for Wyoming's airfare issues and their air service issues. None of that has been able to occur effectively with the monster in the closet. But we're still fighting that fight. And I'm not to say that this is what I do day in and day out, like Glenn and Casey do. But I think what we are asking for is recognition from this council that this is a fight worth keeping, to have air service by more than one airline in Casper. We are on the cusp of some amazing economic development. Because of COVID, people are able to work remotely. People are able to live in a place that they want to live and still, as long as they can get there, travel around. And that has opened up a lot of economic benefits. And the impact is difficult to measure, and I know you want us to give us a number. We can't give you those numbers. All we can tell you is what SkyWest wants on a quarterly basis to stay here. So we're trying to reshape the conversation so that SkyWest is making money on their own. Maybe we can get another airline, maybe we can have a statewide airline, but we can't constantly be dealing with this MRG. Totally agree with the mayor on that. That is why Fly Casper exists.
Tasma, may I say, I absolutely agree with you, and I acknowledge that we need to try to keep two airlines coming in to the only international airport in the state of Wyoming. There's, the acknowledgement on my part is there 100%. The problem I have is I don't ever see the MRG going away. That's where my fight is. Because if I thought this was, you know, a three or a four-time fix-all, the MRG is gone, they're going to be profitable, it'd be a different story. My, and I was just trying to, while you were talking, we have Gillette, Rock Springs, Riverton, Cody, Jackson, Sheridan, Worland. Did I miss any? Laramie?
In Casper, so nine commercial service airports.
Nine commercial service airports, when we literally only need one. And if we had one right here in Casper in the center of the state, no matter where you live in the state of Wyoming, you could get to an airplane within two hours. And if you live in Denver and you're on the other side, it's a two-hour drive to get to DIA and traffic, period. So to have it, the question is, how do we get Delta to the table and say, enough? Enough, in my opinion, I got to be careful how I say this because I know the press is listening. I don't want to call it stealing, but when you're taking money from nine different communities, taxpayer money, to subsidize your billion-dollar operation, why to subsidize your billion dollar operation, why would you ever change that as long as they're willing to keep giving you the money? So how do we get them to the table and say enough's enough? These smaller communities of 8,000 people don't need commercial airline service. And it's not a knock against the Rivertons or the Worlands. It's just not. But they can get in a car and drive an hour and a half to get on a plane. We do it all the time. How do we get them to the table and stop this? How does this stop? Let's say the 76 passenger jet comes in July 1st. We've got a subsidy to get us through. We all know the oil industry, I'm in it. Oil's going to hit $100 a barrel again. That jet fuel's going up. They are not going to make their mark in the third quarter. I don't see any how they can. So then what happens in the fourth quarter? After we've given them over a million and a half dollars of state and county munis, or tax money, they say, sorry, we're out. Wait, what? Do you see where my dilemma is? So help me to get there, to say, okay, if, if this money can be brought through, we can get here. I mean, there's got to be some kind of a plan to get them to the table. I'm, I'm hoping, I'm guessing, I'm asking for some help here. I don't, I just don't want to, I don't want to strap our community by pulling a service when I, when there's something we could have done. But I damn sure don't want to waste taxpayer money and keep throwing it in a hole that's never going to recover. And for me, that's the difference between the Ford Wyoming Center, when we subsidize a million dollars a year, but it brings 20 million into our community, or 25 billion, thank you, whatever it is. So this, this is a different animal. It's not bringing that to us and, and nor will it ever, truly. But what's, what's the answer that I'm looking, you know the question I'm asking, right?
I believe so. If I may.
Please.
We're taking a multifaceted approach to that question. And one is if we create the demand to fly out of Casper. And through marketing, that's our short term approach. We will not only be able to have a tougher conversation with SkyWest for the Delta route, but also look at, are there other airlines that would like to be in Casper that have a flight to an area that is easier to justify? Phoenix, for example, is a common destination from Casper. I think Houston is the other one. And so there's other airlines that are based out of those locations. Those are their hubs. And so are, are we able to take the data that we're able to generate from this larger aircraft and shop Casper so that we have some competition for United and we're not beholden to SkyWest? We are trying to increase our relationship with SkyWest so that when we do get to sit down with them and we're not inclined to do an MRG discussion because we don't feel like it's warranted, that we can be a little tougher, that we have some leverage to deal with SkyWest at that time. The other thing that we're doing is trying to increase the appeal of Casper to not only the, the drive time to the residents of Worland, but also to come into Casper, because these airplanes do fly both ways. So we're looking at those lower months where we don't consistently have tourism coming into Casper. And what can we do? What partnerships can we create in the short term with our hotels to allow for parking to be free? Come the night before, go to Gaslight, you know, enjoy what is Casper. Don't just park here at N CIA, no offense, and get on a plane. But stop here, you know, don't drive to Denver. Also looking at what events can we help create in those off months? Can we do a partnership with Hokodon and feature the night skiing and have some sort of family friendly ski weekend in those January, February months that, that will drive people here from other states? So it, there's a lot of different ways to, I guess, keep the monster, but get rid of the monster is ultimately our goal. And, and perhaps I'm more idealistic, the MRG is going to go away one way or the other. Either SkyWest will, or it just won't be necessary any longer.
Do we have the $50,000? First off, I guess that's probably the most important question for this council right now.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, Pete and I were conferring a little bit about some of the opportunities that we could consider for a funding relationship, one way or the other. And, you know, my inclination would be to say, is one cent seventeen a possibility? Given that compared to 64 and a half million dollars, you would think there's 50,000 bucks somewhere, right? Evidently not. We have prescribed it all and, and you're probably not surprised by that. However, we do have a residual balance right now in direct distribution that should be sufficient to cover even $50,000 if you want to go that direction. It wouldn't compromise any of the projects that we're working on. It wouldn't compromise any of the projects we talked about for fiscal year '24, nor would it violate the cash on hand doctrine that we've tried to embrace and pursue with everything else that we do, so.
Okay, well, in the spirit of, of moving on, I'm going to offer a suggestion to this council and, and then we can, of course, discuss it from that point. But you all know my hard stance on this. But I'm, I'm literally willing to give Tasma some grace here and, and go one time and give them the $50,000 and, but tell them, don't come back. Don't come back for MRG money, not to this city, as long as I'm sitting here. Because I don't ever see this stopping. I see their hand in everybody's pocket in the state of Wyoming. And I think as long as people are willing to open their pocket for them, they're going to keep reaching. That's, that's how I feel about it. So I guess we need direction that, I guess the first direction I'll offer is we give them the $50,000. We hope that, you know, the county gave them $800,000. They've got some private funds from, from some other entities. And we, we hope that they get Delta to the table and, or SkyWest, excuse me. And, you know, I, I, I don't think 50,000 is a huge ask. But it's more than, than I really want to give, I'll be honest. But, I mean, I guess we got to give them an opportunity to get that big jet in here and see if it's going to make the difference. I'd hate to, to have given them a million and a half to this point. And I think we've given them more than that actually with the state. Overall, can you, do you have a number off the top of your head? Overall, total MRGs from when we started, it's probably three or four million bucks, I'm guessing? No?
We've, we've committed more. We've spent, of the first MRG, which was $780,000, I think the total was $56,000. And the state paid 40% of that. That's, that's what I'm saying. It's been more successful. So the commitment has been larger, but what we have actually has paid has been, my guess right now, county wise, 600,000.
Okay. Well, that would be, do you have something here?
When you're finished.
I'm, I'm finished. That, that's the suggestion I offered, so we'll, go ahead.
I would support that suggestion because I think it would be a shame to stumble at the finish line when we feel like we do have a path that has been identified. I think we're really fortunate to have a group working on this. It obviously needs to be addressed. You have to come at it from a lot of different angles, which I think is, you know, has been being built over the next, over the last several years to even put us in a position where we can address these things. And so I, I think it, it isn't a huge ask. I think it's worth the investment to get us to the next step. Whether that is we lose the airline and we got to come up with Plan B, or whether that is we keep it and we, and it becomes sustainable and we move forward. I, I don't think it's, I, I think, you know, that's, that's a question like we need to answer in this community. And getting that answer to me and, you know, and moving us to the next phase of this, of addressing this issue is, is worth the $50,000.
Well, with 100% transparency, that's, that's where I was coming from. Because you know how I feel. You know I don't want to do this. But I also, I see the finish line and I, let's get a chance to get across it and see what it brings. Go ahead.
I agree. As much as it'd be nice to just tell all the smaller communities that they don't need an airport, I don't think that's how it's going to work for us. So I think we need to give them enough time to convince them, maybe they'd like to save their MRG money and come here. And the only way we're going to do that is to make our flights affordable. I can't afford Delta. So I think we need to give Fly Casper a hot minute to try to see if they could fix this.
I agree with you. Could you imagine if they took the MRG money from these smaller communities and bought a bus and ran bus service every day to Casper? How absolutely amazing that would be for everyone involved, for the customer, for our airport, for the airline. And they could probably buy a few buses with that money. Go ahead, Lisa.
I do have a question. Are you guys by chance in conversations with any of the other counties with these airports to just talk about their money and what they would like to do? Because they are spending money as well.
We, we don't talk to the other communities per se. And I don't, you know, I ever see every community is going to fight for what they think is best for the communities. The economics that we're facing, the whole reason why we're doing the MRG now when we've never had to do that is because the market has changed with the service. So if it's changed with us, it's changed with every other community. It's going to be more expensive to be able to fly those 50 passenger airplanes in those other communities. And either those communities put bigger airplanes in if they're available, which they may or may not have enough passengers. So the, the, the economics of the service with the other communities in the state, something is going to shake out. Because it's, we're not, we're not going into COVID and then coming out, having everything back to the way it was. The market has changed and it's changed for everybody. And certain markets are going to do better and certain markets are going to end up doing worse.
I could add to that. The, the only community that would be excluded from that was, we've been talking with Jackson. They're the other profitable airline and airport. And so we see some synergy there.
Would this be something to bring up to WAM?
Absolutely. We certainly could.
Thanks. Question I have is, you know, money that, that is designated for the MRG, if they, if it performs better than we expect and there, all the full balance of the money is not needed. I, I recognize there's, you know, a credit system that's in play and that sort of thing. How long does it, does that money stick around and does it revert then to Fly Casper for marketing and for other things? Or what, what happens with the leftover, if we're being optimistic?
That would depend on the strings that you put on the, the transfer. Because at this point, I think you're discussing the 50,000 in support of the MRG.
Yes.
So if you would have to probably direct, I'm looking at Eric.
They'll have chains on it, not string.
Chains, perfect. I will tell you from, from Fly Casper's perspective, if for some reason the 50,000 was for the MRG and we did not get to that necessity, we would love to have it then be contributed. Because our long-term goal is to not have this be something that you guys ever deal with again. And I guess we would, we would use it definitely for marketing and the other.
Well, I would think that that would be our direction.
That's what I would suggest then, if that, if we don't need it for the MRG, I would like to see it go towards ensuring that we don't need it for the MRG in the future.
Correct. So, so that we need, we can move on because we've got a long night ahead of us. The proposal is to, to give them the $50,000 towards the MRG in hopes that, in hopes that it helps. And in the event that it's not needed, then Fly Casper will use that money for their marketing program, which is really where we want it to go anyway. All in favor? Okay. There you go.
Thank you very much.
To my dismay, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming. I appreciate you. All right. You ready? Okay, man. Aquatic Center Roof Deck Funding Plan, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. This is a conversation that you're familiar with. What you may not be as familiar with is the notion that things have changed a little bit for us in terms of the plan that we initially thought we could pursue in terms of funding this project. Furthermore, you're going to hear from Zalima and Mr. Schenk that indeed costs have gone up. I know, it's surprising. No, maybe not. Okay. Frustrating, at least. And so we, we need to reevaluate how it is that you'd like to support this project, if you would like to continue with its support, which I would recommend that you consider seriously that we do. Initially, we thought that we would be able to pursue the capital program through the state because they had an interest rate that was extremely competitive and quite useful in terms of the plans that we had in mind to, to match the cash flow issues that one cent seventeen proposes in order to get this project done on a more timely basis. However, as a virtue of the recent legislative session, that cost of lending has gone up pursuant to direction of the legislature. And so all of a sudden, the value that we thought we would gain with low cost money is no longer available. And so the question is whether or not you would like to underwrite the cost of that project as well as find a way to bring the difference to the table so that we can be ready to go to bid and hopefully with any luck, find bids that are commensurate with the dollars that we've set aside to make this project happen. So we've got Zalima here with us tonight, Mr. Schenk with us as well, who can answer any number of questions that you might have as it relates to some discussion as to why costs went up, some discussion as to the scope that may be of concern as well. And then finally, if you're comfortable with the financial plan that we're considering to make this project happen. Zalima is ready to go if you want.
Okay, I do have a question for you.
Sure.
I saw that the interest rate from the State Loan Investment Board went from 1% to 3.47.
Correct.
So I understand the difference in that amount of money right off the bat, plus the additional cost of material.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so this is something that has to be done. We can't kick this can another down the road anymore. This, this unfortunately has to get done. My question for you is if we underwrite that, that's interest free, correct? Because it's us just doing it. So we're saving, in a sense, the 3.47 right off the top.
Mr. Mayor, you bring up a really good point and it's, and it's largely a philosophical approach that council would need to be comfortable with. Certainly as it relates to the loanability, not the loanability, excuse me, the earnability of the dollars that we would deploy to make the project happen, that we would lose out of perpetual care. There's certainly a cost there because that interest income, even though it may be fractional, would be reduced.
But it's not going to be as much as if we would have paid the 3.47?
I would agree.
That's the question, right?
As well as the originating costs and those kinds of things, yes. So, so beyond that, Mr. Mayor, that would be your dilemma, I think, that you'd have to grapple with to make sure you're comfortable.
Are you comfortable with that funding model?
I am, yeah, yeah. And I, and I would agree with you too. Kicking the can down the road on this project, I don't think is really an option.
I, I don't think it is either, not at this point. Go ahead.
Observation I made reading the memo is there was a recommendation to reduce the contingency from 15% to 5%. Is that to make this just a little bit easier, a little more palatable? Or I was curious what the justification was for that. Because I would rather set aside the money now than have to scramble for it later when we get the change orders and stuff that I think are inevitable considering our climate, so.
Mr. Mayor, counselor, that's a fair question. And, and without a doubt, contingencies, when you don't use them, are not monies that you spend. But they certainly are monies that you obligate throughout the duration of the, of the project. And so that too is a factor that you need to be comfortable with. I would tell you that every architect will say, absolutely, you're going to need that 15%. Because you never know what costs are going to come up. Project managers and Andrews Department will say that too. Because you can never tell. This is a complex project and without a doubt has a propensity, a possibility that there will be other project costs that we aren't, you know, aware of right now. The 5% is dramatically different than the 15%, but certainly, you know, it, it is a, a, a means of trying to bring the collection of dollars into a little more sustainable focus. And so that, that's my strategy. Again, I don't think the architect, I don't think Andrews project manager would be wild about that. But, but I'm giving you that as an offering, as a means of, again, trying to find a little more sustainability for a project that is absolutely critical to do.
Is it possible to do the project and keep the 15% contingency? Because I'll be honest with you, I'm not comfortable with, excuse me, with 5%. I'm just not. This is a roof. It's a, and then what? We're going to scramble for, you know, $300,000.
Find more money.
Yeah. And I, to me, that, that's just too big of a gamble, I think. I want to see the project go through. Can it still happen with a 15% contingency or even 10%? Could we split the, split the baby 10% and? Could we split the, split the baby at 10% and at least have some comfortability in there?
Absolutely, absolutely. That's certainly a possibility. You betcha.
Sir?
I could. Uh, typically what we do when we're at this phase of a project, we'll recommend carrying 10 to 15% contingency because it covers both bidding potential, cost overruns, because lately we just haven't been able to really, even though we work hard with our cost consultants, it's difficult to pin down numbers because things are still in such flux and, uh, construction as well. And then the, what you don't spend there, keep your fingers crossed, is going to come in on or under budget, then you can reduce that contingency amount down to a number that we feel comfortable with going into the construction phase. Now this one, we would feel comfortable with a little bit higher contingency number during construction because it is renovation. We're going to open up a lot of things that we've made predictions about based on the assessment study, um, that was spot items. And until you pull that roof off and see the condition on top of that structural deck, we're presuming the only thing that we have to replace is the perimeter decking that you can see the damage to. We don't know what's happening on top where it's saturated, has been through 10 years. So that's where I would say, you know, if you carried the 15 after it bids, go ahead and squeeze that number down to a comfortable number of maybe five, six. We'd have to look at where the numbers bounce out percentage-wise and continue on from there. So you may say now we set aside 15% to contingency, but ultimately that number compresses, so it just falls off and goes back into your account somewhere else that we don't touch.
Would you be comfortable with that?
Mr. Mayor, I am comfortable with whatever direction you like. Uh, that, that certainly seems a little more palatable. Um, I, I'm just not, you know, it, it's finding money and it's occupying money that I'd like to use elsewhere.
I just worry, like he said, water tends to find, uh, places to go. And I have a feeling when they get into that decking, there's probably going to be more issues than one would think.
Oh, my God.
Well, that's always the hope.
Exactly, yeah.
But water is water is water and it goes where it wants to go. So I, I don't know, Carter, I, I think I'd be more comfortable at the 15% and then let's, after the bidding process and I guess we see where we're at, maybe squeezing it down just to make sure we have the money on hand in the adventure. You guys, how do you guys feel about that?
I think that you absolutely probably need that 15%.
I'm not a contractor, I don't have professional experience, but I am used to getting disappointed when we get our bids back and stuff, so. Just trying to.
Prepare, prepare yourself.
Well, if you're comfortable with that, I, I say that's the way to go with that. And I don't think anybody's questioning or opposed to this project moving forward. I, it, it absolutely has to get done. We've got a heck of an asset sitting underneath it that's, as the days go by, is getting worse and worse. And so, uh, when would constructions, or when would it go to bid, I guess? This would be a project for next spring?
Our plan is to release documents tomorrow.
So, right, but it would start when? Like construction? Okay. So this could possibly be done before next spring?
No, well, I'll let's address that, so.
Uh, Mayor, Councilors, so you may recall during our first discussion, there was, um, some strategies, two different strategies being examined. Uh, one was to do what is predicted at about 11 months worth of construction, all in a singular phase. Uh, and then the other strategy was to split that in two phases so that we would be able to operate the Aquatic Center during the winter months when there are no other planes available for the community to use. Um, and so initially the estimates, um, had, had quite a delta that we would have to contend with if we decided to split the project into several hundred thousand dollars, was the original estimate. Um, now the architects and engineers are saying, uh, because of the reduced scope, um, and, and you will likely see when we bid this project, much like projects safe, there were a lot of alternates. Uh, we identified the components that were absolutely critical to meet the specific mission to make it structurally safe and viable into the future. Um, there are other components within the project that are recommended by the design team, um, that are not critical to making it a safe and operable, um, facility. And so, uh, we asked them to enter those as alternates. Um, and, and so the pricing that you're hearing tonight does not include the, uh, 1.3 million dollars and six different alternates that, that will be bid. But the point is with the reduced scope of the project, they're now estimating that the change from going all at once to splitting the project in two is only $60,000. And with the $60,000, uh, added investment, we think it's worth it to open up the Aquatic Center and have that asset available to the community during the winter months.
Agreed.
So that's, that's where we're at with that. So, so realistically, if we split it into two phases, then the construction timeline ends, remind me when?
Well, uh, we would, we would, uh, bid it in July and all goes well, they'd start late July, wrap up the first phase, the end of December, uh, this year, and then start up again next June when outdoor pools are available.
And run it through roughly December again.
Well, September, we're hoping by the end of September they'll have it complete.
And you think the perpetual care fund can take the hit right now and, uh, because it will be replenished, of course, um, in time for whatever other projects that money was earmarked for, I'm assuming?
Well, the, the, the challenge, Mr. Mayor, that we have is, uh, given the, the margin of costs compared to what we originally anticipated for the scope of this project, I would not re- recommend for the entirety of perpetual care, only because One Cent Seventeen is only slated to cover the base amount, the original base amount. And so now we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $500,000 in excess of that base amount. And so I am not proposing that $500,000 come out of perpetual care. It's going to have to come out of some reserve of yours, probably capital reserves, in order to make this project happen and it would likely not be reimbursed through One Cent Seventeen.
Well, that's unfortunate, but it's also necessary.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, this is making me wonder, because we went over the aquatics fund subsidy last night and I didn't think to ask whether, you know, obviously there's going to be some closure. The fund subsidy that we were talking about last night, did it have built into it the lost revenues that we would realize with, you know, the process of this construction? Was that a component of the discussion that we had last night or no?
Mayor, Councilor, that's an excellent question. And in fact, we built the budget to not account for that because of the uncertainty of what actually we were going to do. So we assumed kind of a, a normal operating, um, and, and will now need to prepare what that looks like. Um, the, the reality though is that, uh, especially in the summer months, the Aquatic Center tends to be a losing endeavor. And so having it closed during the summer, uh, would actually probably be a savings to the fund overall.
Okay. What's your recommendation?
Probably move forward. Absolutely.
I would agree with you, I just, I mean, you're the one that's got to find the money. Everybody good with that? Did we lose Mr. Bond? I have enough thumbs without him, but I'm just curious if we've lost him or?
I think he's still there. He's just, yeah.
All right. There we go. Mr. Bond, we have thumbs up all the way around to proceed with the aquatics. Okay, very good. All right, Sylvia, thank you. Thank you. Was that easy enough for you? Let's move on to Robertson, Trevette, miscellaneous land sales, and then we will convene for some dinner, uh, after this portion. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, councilors, we, uh, have followed your guidance and have indeed put forward the parcel at Robertson Road in Trevette, city-owned parcel, if you will, up for, uh, bid and proposal by the private sector. And you probably noted, which I was kind of surprised by in the, uh, in the memo, we, we have tried this eight previous times to, to market this, this parcel. And this is the first bid that we've gotten since 2014 or whatever it is that we first went to bid, uh, previously, historically. You will also note that the bid, uh, does not match with respect to the appraisal that we received as far as that expansive land is concerned. And so that too will need to weigh in to your determination as to whether or not we should proceed. Now certainly the applicant has, uh, suggested as a, a justification, if you will, as to why that difference is appropriate. And I'll leave that up to, to Liz to kind of walk us through, uh, pursuant to your determination. Then of course we will move in whatever direction you would suggest. I would tell you that we also have a smaller land question that we want to run by you as well, um, to, uh, to ensure that we don't get ahead of you and, and make sure we proceed with that piece in your accordance also. So without further ado, if I could turn the time over to, to Liz, that would be great.
Ms. Becker?
Mayor, Members, Council. As Mr. Napier, I think pretty well laid it out. We have, um, offered this parcel for, um, sale many, many times. And, um, last one I could find was 2009 or when I, when we first started, it was probably 2009 was what I had found. And we did get this proposal, you all saw it in the, um, packet for 60 twin homes. And the proposer did justify the reduction in the price with the fact that we would need to have easements along the eastern edge of the property for our utilities and then the roads built. And I'm blocking.
Who would those easements be from, Liz?
Pardon?
Those easements would come from who?
Us.
Exactly.
And, um, then the road construction and then just currently all of the interest rate issues with housing developments as we are all facing that now. So, um, he had reduced it, pretty well laid that out, um, in his proposal that I had, um, copied to you all in that packet.
I did have a couple thoughts after reading this.
Yes.
One is he's offering about half what it's appraised for. And his, his justifications on both fronts are not our problem, those are his, you know, the cost of development, uh, in other words, his profit center, um, the easements which he gets from the city. So those could certainly be negotiated, I would assume. So, uh, I mean, I feel bad for him that, that he's, um, not going to make the profit he thought he was because interest rates are up, but, uh, I cannot justify selling a piece of property for half of its value.
Your call.
I ran on, I ran for this particular seat because of the planes building, because of what the city purchased for, purchased it for, and then what they sold it for and the loss that we took. And it, it infuriated me to the point that I, that's what, why I ran for this seat. I will never vote for selling a piece of property for half of its value. And I understand we've offered it eight times, nine, this is the ninth time.
Right.
But I can't get behind this. We don't need that half million in that bag. Go ahead. Uh, no, excuse me, Lisa's first, sorry.
Just so you know, his, his theory about interest rates, we could sell those houses all day long, he's not going to make what he thinks, he's going to make more than what he thinks. And that's what he's going to do. So houses are currently selling at much higher value than they ever have before and nothing is sitting on the market. So, and then the land, although that it's been offered multiple different times, it's got some value and it's, it's, this is basically for him to offer the land lots at a premium price and so that he's just got more money in his pocket. And so that's, it, it, it just doesn't fly.
I'm with you. Uh, Mr. G?
Thanks, Bruce.
Mm-hmm.
Liz, I was curious, uh, first question, do you have any indication why, um, the first eight times it went out for bid, there were no bids? I'm curious, you know, it doesn't seem like a obviously or apparently bad spot to me who doesn't know any better. Have you been given any information why we've never been given any bids before?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, we have, um, been told that the appraisal was too high over the years. And we have had individuals offer 50 cents a square foot and that they would purchase it and then want to sit on it for speculation. We've had that go on. Um, we have, as I indicated in the memo, offered it up, it's zone PUZ currently, we've offered to do a rezone if there's interest that we would take that on as a, as a planning commission topic. Um, primarily it's been the valuation and it's, it's ranged over the years from about $800,000 for all nine acres up to what you all see at the $1,035,000 that we currently have it appraised for. So it's, I've had three different appraisers over those last, over those various offers too. So it's not just been a single appraiser that we've used. And, you know, we've seen all the development out there, um, we've seen a lot along Robertson Road. So this has been the first that we have received, so, other than just verbal comments.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Follow-up?
Yeah.
I thought this council had approved, uh, I think it was a replat or something of the, uh, uh, I know there was another developer seeking to develop, um, further west down at the very end of Trevette. Do you know, is that project still a go? Is somebody still planning? I did.
I think that was Dennis Linden that was directing Trails, was out of Trails West.
So I was just curious, um, you know, it's something I think we should take into consideration if there's more development going at the end of Trevette. I was curious if anybody has an update on whether, I, I know they, they built a house at the end of the street, I see stuff going on down there.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, that development is occurring.
Okay.
Small. It's small, I mean, it's, it's single-family homes versus the twin home.
But it was like a full neighborhood, right? Like a couple streets and so?
Sure.
Couple dozen, maybe single-family homes. Uh, the only reason I bring that up is I've mentioned it in the past, the fact that this neighborhood, which is where I live, uh, used to be in the county, uh, you know, not up to city development standards, uh, Trevette and Harrington are really the only two egresses out of this entire neighborhood. It led to a lot of traffic congestion, especially during pickup and drop-off at, uh, Oregon Trail Elementary. I was very thankful our streets department put a turning lane in at Trevette, I think that has helped a lot. But, um, I know I have concerns and I had multiple people call me, uh, expressing shared concerns that, um, you know, that, that's, uh, we, we'd be adding a lot of people to that neighborhood that already has traffic congestion issues. I'm curious, uh, Andrew, um, I don't imagine we've done any sort of traffic study or anything. And if, uh, if not, I'd be curious what your thoughts are on the potential traffic impacts, uh, with a development such as this.
Mayor, Council, we don't generate traffic studies until the development is pretty firm. And so this is pretty speculative at best and it's very hard for residential properties to rise to the level of being a detriment to current traffic matters. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very high standard and, and it'd be hard pressed to see this generate additional traffic to warrant a level of service decline from the existing conditions.
Thank you. Amber?
Thank you. I have two questions. The first is, um, in, in regards to the easements, um, I'm really familiar with how those are treated in an appraisal process. Are easements not considered, um, in appraisal requiring, you know, this sort of subtraction to say like this isn't developable, we need to reduce the value of the property because of, does the appraiser not do that?
Mr. Mayor, Council, that was not a consideration. When the property is put out for bid, there's not, um, designated use when we, pardon me, when it's put out for appraisal, we do not indicate what the desired use is. So it's purely possible that this would have come back as a commercial. So we did not have anything in there to account for the easement consideration.
A follow-up.
Please.
Is this something then, uh, do we see this, uh, you know, when we, when we put land out, uh, do we see this type of thing come back? Is it, is, is it common practice to say like, well, this part, I can't build on this, so I should subtract the value off of my bid?
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this is the first.
Okay, thank you. And the second question I had, which is now escaping me, so I'll wait and come back to you.
Lisa?
It's not typical to have appraisals have anything to do with the easements. Almost everybody has an easement in their yard and then it's not recommended, but a lot of times we do use them as our yard space or trees or whatever else. With that being said, right now, every single buyer out there thinks there's blood in the water and they're lowballing. And I think that you should always counter back. And so I would offer up that we should counter back at $900,000.
That was my question. Can we do that? That was my other question.
I, I, I like where you're going with it, but I have a hard time selling something for less than what it appraises for. I mean, we have to be good stewards of this. I mean, we have to be good stewards of this land. It's owned by our citizens. And once you open that door-
Well, it's also to keep in the conversation, and then also to keep the ball rolling. He may or may not even accept the $900,000, but just like selling anything, there's always negotiation. And so, yes, it appraised for that, but the city has been sitting on it for a long period of time. And so it would be nice to get it rid of that asset off of our books. The city is having to mow it and maintain it and things of that nature. So it would be nice to just be able to sell that, too.
I would agree. And, and it's very advantageous. I mean, what he's wanting to do, we are in a dire need for housing in our community. So that, that hits me very well.
And Mr. Mayor, the estimated sales tax we, Craig and I had run through, would be about $90,000 a year upon build-out. So we're kind of always looking at that, but-
Right.
Just some more information.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, Amber. Did it hit you?
What?
The one that you lost, did it come back to you?
It was, it was to Lisa's point, like, can we, can we counter? Was my other question. But this one is, talk to me about affordable housing in town, like, what the status of it is, like, where you see the needs in terms of, of our development, the things that you are looking out for in planning.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, this would not be an affordable development. He wanted to do it at market rate.
This is more desirable for elderly people? So it's one-level patio homes?
Like what we have along-
Grounds.
Over by the grounds, yeah. Same developer, right?
It is. So that's more at market rate.
Okay.
But to your question, you know, we've just completed, we have, Housing Authority just completed Liberty Square. Council did elect to sell that under appraised value. But again, workforce housing was a need, and you made that decision three years ago to sell that under the appraised value by about, I guess, about $300,000.
To a city partner.
To a city partner.
Okay. Yeah, I was confused. It says 80% of value as interest, and inflation has burdened any affordable housing development. So I assumed it was. Okay.
Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. With regard to the ability to negotiate, I'm not sure that that exists in the statute. 151112A is the process that we engaged in. We solicited bids. We received one. Statute clearly says the property shall be sold to the highest responsible bidder unless the governing body in the town, city or town rejects all bids. So it seems to me that we either accept the bid or reject it. We can certainly go back out, you know, and certainly send a message. But I don't think that we can, in this case, just negotiate, contract statute.
Thank you. My proposal would be to reject the bid then. I don't think 50, 50% is anywhere near appropriate. So that would be my suggestion. That is certainly up for discussion or a counter-suggestion, if you choose.
Reject it.
Pardon?
Reject it.
All in favor of rejecting the bid? Done. Thank you, ma'am. Let's break for dinner.
We had just one-
I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, you did. I apologize. Please, go ahead.
This one came in post-
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
Packet being mailed out. We've got, we'll go to the first picture. We can, this one. We've got a parcel of city-owned land. This is Collins.
Freegrounds.
Freegrounds, thank you. And there's a parcel here at the corner of Locust and Collins that is city-owned. It's about 5,000 square feet. Take in note that we've got part of our road that cuts through here also. We'll go to another, next picture. Turn in on the aerial or the satellite. Okay, so we're looking at the neighborhood. This is all zoned residential, single-family. And then here, we've got it here. So we've got the development around the neighborhood there. We have been approached about offering this for sale. Currently, Parks maintains it. So again, it's a maintenance component. There is irrigation. We've confirmed that with our Parks Department that is in this particular lot. But there's interest out there in this parcel. And so we would go about pretty much the same activity process that we just did with listing a parcel for sale if there is interest here. And see if we get a bid on it. This one is of interest to city staff to offload. Parks is fine with that, too. But over the years, previous councils have asked staff to look at these little pieces here and there, and to look at opportunities to, in this case, ideal for another residential home. The lot is big enough. We've got a 4,000-square-foot minimum on this zoning classification, so this is plenty big to put a residence up there, get, again, more sales tax dollars. And right now, again, all we are doing is mowing it and irrigating it, so.
Well, you hadn't appraisal done on it yet?
No. So again, didn't want to do any of that until, hopefully, I see some thumbs up. But Carter had asked that we just try to-
One question. Does it create any issue if we sell it considering part of the property-
We would take that into account, Your Honor, with that particular topic.
Everybody good with moving forward with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, there you have it.
Yeah, we want to preserve that road. We don't want to sell it.
Yes, ma'am. Well, you got your thumbs up. I'd put my kitchen right over that yellow line. Is there anything else?
The next item was pretty quick, and I know we've got four people here that had a conflict. So I'm just going to speak up. If there's any way that we could hit the fire code.
Oh, the NEC.
No, we are going to.
I know, but there, I know you all are breaking for dinner.
No, we're not. We're gonna, we're gonna do that.
I-
No, Carter said, hey, they're here, can we do it? And I said, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Carter. Okay. Good deal.
So, Mr. Mayor, Council received some public comment the other night about the, the possibility of Council adopting the most recent version of the National Electrical Code. My concern was that with, with respect to some of the comments that were being shared back and forth, that there may have been a blending of issues that have been brought up in the past, not necessarily about the NEC, but more about the UBC, the Uniform Building Code. And, and for us, that's a really important distinction that, that the NEC does not typically contribute to. Now, you'll notice that in one of our articles that came out in the media recently, said something to the effect of, housing costs could go up by $1,000 if the city adopts the recent NEC and so on. And, and I'm not a big fan of those kinds of headlines. It's not always true, and it's pursuant to a lot of other conditions that may apply or not apply, et cetera, et cetera. But nonetheless, we wanted to give you the opportunity to ask you any questions you might have about what happens if, and what happens if we don't adopt the most recent version of the NEC. Because I would suggest right out of the gate that this is way more significant should we not adopt the NEC compared to conversations we've had in the past about the UBC, which is a different series of code and discussions altogether.
But the truth is, this particular one keeps us in line with what the state-
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. So Fire's ready to talk about it, if you'd like. We've got our team from the building folks as well. We're here to help with this conversation.
Amber.
I, I think the only question that I have is, it seemed like Mr. Sweeney was implying that there may be some degree of flexibility. My understanding is there's not any degree of flexibility. You either adopt it and, and comply and retain oversight, or you don't, and they take over oversight instead.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor, that's, that is my impression, and that is what I would be worried about.
Eric is-
And Eric's already answering the question.
No, that's okay, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. That is absolutely correct. 359121 is the statute that allows municipalities to have local enforcement. And it clearly states that if we've been granted authority under this subsection, we fail to adopt within six months following the adoption of new standards by the department to meet the state, or maintain standards by ordinance or resolution that are at least, meet the statewide standards, enforcement authorities shall immediately revert to the department. And it's our responsibility to notify if we don't do that. So since I did look up on the state website, these were adopted by the state, it become effective July 1 of this year. So we'd have six months by statute from that date to adopt them, otherwise we would lose local enforcement.
I'm not really interested in losing local enforcement capabilities, so I think we can-
Not only that, but we damn sure don't want the state coming in and telling us what to do. Justice, since you guys were so kind to come, I'm assuming this is a recommendation that you would, and that you folks would get behind, correct? So we are not a micromanaging type of council. We never have been. So we are certainly not going to overstep our bounds when it comes to our, our brains that know the situation, if you'd like to speak to it.
Correct. I mean, if, if we don't adopt it, essentially, the state comes in, regardless, the contractor is going to have to follow the rules of the new 2020 code. So it just makes sense that we keep it in-house. And we, we collect the revenue associated with that.
Excellent. Thank you. Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. Carter, do you point earlier about disputing the allegation that it could increase building costs $500 to $1,000? Again, this is not my level, my area of expertise. I was curious, either from building or Fire, if they could speak to that and educate me and my colleagues a little bit further about what exactly, you know, there's a lot of technical language here, so I'm just curious, kind of highlights. Do you see it actually adding to the cost of building? Are there, you know, you seem to have reasons otherwise. I was hoping somebody could help educate-
Justice, could you speak to that? Where that's coming from is, we had a, we had a former state rep here last week that spoke to the council and mentioned that it could possibly cost between an extra $500 to $1,000 towards building of a, I guess, of a dwelling.
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, where that is coming from is the breaker coverage is very required. I'm going to defer to Sean, our master electrical electrician and regional inspector, he's more savvy with technical aspects of the electrical side, Mr. Mayor of Council.
Please.
It's just, you know, everybody knows inflation's happening, and the costs of these breakers are going up. So it's just an honest assessment of what we'll probably see in the future. If they come down, that's subject to change. But as, as where we stand now, that's a pretty good, you know, big shot, I guess.
And I'm assuming this is for new construction and/or remodels where they have to upgrade?
Correct.
Regardless, builders are going to be held to that standard, whether we adopt this or not, right? The state will require it of them. So it's not like they would have an opportunity to save money if we do not adopt this.
Great point. Sir, I'll get you, Lisa.
To that point, it sounds like we have six months. If there's anything Council could, I, I understand there's probably good reasons to pass these regulations. You know, common phrase, regulations are written in blood. My guess is they're being recommended because something bad happened. Somebody lost their life, or it's otherwise dangerous to do otherwise. But especially in these times of inflationary periods and stuff, if there's anything this council could do to provide relief in the sense of postponing this for four months, you know, giving them a little bit of relief through the summer, a busy building period, I would be, as long as there's no clear and obvious reasons to do otherwise, we'd still be meeting the state statute mandate, we would retain authority. I would throw that as a, you know, an option on the table to postpone this for four months and, you know, get closer to the deadline, unless there's good reason to do otherwise.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to hear it from our two.
That would be entirely up to you, honestly.
What are the downfalls of doing that?
For instance, last code cycle, thing is ground fault, electricians. In this code cycle, we're writing that out. So there is a cost savings of that breaker, which is $150 to $200 for residents or installation. So there is some leeway there. Because the 2023 says, if it's a dual rest of you, you don't have to do that. And they added some kitchens ranges for instance. So it almost balances out, honestly.
Do you have a thought?
No, I, I would defer to Sean, Mr. Mayor, and also to the building department on that. From the, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselors. I would defer to the, the building department on that. As our review and plan reviews for new construction, the electrical, we always defer to them. We, we're more the maintenance code when it comes to electrical, when we get into the inspections of the facilities after they're built, and, and we do a CO on them. But I would definitely defer to their recommendation.
Thank you. Would it offer an advantage to our customers, to our contractors, to wait this out four months, like the counselor is suggesting?
In my opinion, no. But again, that is up to you.
Thanks, Bruce. So a point of clarification, I think you just explained that. But the previous codes mandated some upgrades that in this new set of codes, they've now removed, and you were saying essentially, it's a wash. That's what you were saying just now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Lisa.
It's been a minute, so let me try to remember all the things I was going to say. So, so this actually also affects houses that are being sold, because when we do inspections, it gets inspected to the current code. So anything that's existing that's not up to current code, then we have to bring them up to current code as well. So it affects that market, too.
Excellent.
We're, we're just literally at the point where we think that every single outlet in the entire house has to be GFCI, just because it started off with wet areas, then it went to the garages, and then, I mean, it just changes. So, I mean, it's-
Well, if you're selling the house, and it's still in the original condition that it was, it shouldn't have to meet current code. It should be a standard in the house. If you're, there was a, if you remodel, then yeah, we have to bring it up to that code. But if you're just selling a house, then it's in the condition that it was.
Well, if you have an old house, 1950s with a Federal Pacific-
And some insurance companies, like you said, are-
Right.
-mandating that service change.
So we have to upgrade the service, and then, and then it's always, because it's also a safety issue. So all these older homes and things, they don't have the GFCI. So it's always something that we have to do. So it's just, it's frustrating as a realtor, and because it, it's just, it's constant. And that's kind of just where we're literally at right at the moment, is just putting GFCIs everywhere. So when we're talking to sellers, it's so hard to keep up with the electrical code and to know, because the inspections, it, for the most part, we do have to bring them up to code. It's, it's 99% of the time.
Well, like, if you change the device, the outlets, yeah, then you'd have to bring it up to a tamper-resistant or a faulted, and all of that. And again, if you sell it as is, and that's what it was, then you do not, but when you, when you spruce it up and put the outlets and do whatever, that would have to raise modifications.
Well, it sounds to me like we're actually mandated to do this statutorily, or we give up control, which we would never want to do. So I think, and it sounds like it's a wash if we do it now. So I guess the recommendation that I would put forth to you would be to approve, to move forward, and so that we can approve the NEC?
NEC, yes.
Everybody okay with that?
And if folks have issue with it, you can hold your state legislators.
There you go. That's exactly right. So thank you, gentlemen, for being here. I appreciate it. Now, we're going to break for lunch. Mr. Buck, welcome back. Those of you that are watching online, we will carry on with our ice arena expansion funding and design, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for hanging in there. What is before you this evening is not necessarily a discussion about the project and, and, you know, deliberating over points with regard to the scope for the project and so on. This is more about the approach that you would like to take as it relates to funding a commitment on the part of the council, so that we can hold it in advance with regard to their potential success from their fundraising standpoint.
Not to interrupt you, but I thought we already did that. I thought we already decided on an amount, and did we not?
We decided on a range, not an amount within that range.
Oh, you want us to pin it down?
And I was wanting also to talk about, you know, how, how we would fund that amount, and with respect to getting a design put together, and at what point. We've got an idea for you to consider, and, and that, that's really it.
Okay, I understand.
So, Zulima, do you have a brief update with regard to where we're at on everything? And maybe start there and go from there.
Sure. Yeah, please.
Mayor, councilors, so really in terms of an update, we have heard from our primary youth group, which is the amateur hockey club. They are full on in their fundraising activities. They have actually engaged a professional to do a design campaign for them for fundraising. And they're very excited and have indicated to us that they have firm commitments for over $2 million at this point. And they expect that to grow pretty rapidly. And so in, in terms of that effort, you know, in our discussion with them, they made the request and staff tends to agree that we pinpoint the point at which council will feel comfortable moving forward with the design effort with the idea that when all the funds become available from them, we would have a design ready and could, you know, put a contract out or bid for construction pretty rapidly after that and not have an additional six months of design where conditions happening and even cost of construction continue to increase. So, so right now, our, our ask, our recommendation is that when the funding, excuse me, the private donors reach 50% of their goal, which will be somewhat dependent on what your determination is this evening on how much firm commitment is, then we would move with design at that point.
Would you please share with the council what they're doing? I was, I was quite shocked actually and pleased with their efforts in their marketing. So I thought the council would like to see that and see how serious they're taking it. And they've already raised $2 million and pretty cool, the way they're marketing it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, while she's looking, I thought it was pretty great as well that they were willing to allow for this process to be within a short window so that we were not just interminably holding his, you know, pocket of money for a five to 10 year fundraising effort rather than pursuing an 18 month.
Well, and one of the real fears is what does that 13 million, 200,000 look like five years from now?
Exactly. Exactly.
Mayor, I can hand these out.
Oh, sure.
My booklet didn't print quite as it was intended, I don't think. And admittedly, there are some points on some of those documents that we need to.
So these are, these are kind of what they're doing. And they've hired a professional to do this, you know, trying to acquire donors and, and showing the amount of rates for naming rights. I'll pass these around. And then they, this is, this is actually a book that I think you took a video, you have video copies of. But anyway, if you want to look at those, they've, they've done a really good job of, well, like I said, $2 million in a very short period of time already. So they're very serious about this. For the city of Casper, it's a huge win. In fact, I mentioned last night, we just signed a, not we, but I guess the ice arena did, right? They signed a, a professional hockey club that is now calling Casper home. They're willing to take whatever ice time's available. So all the non-ice times, like during the day, they're practicing during those times. So we're still getting revenue and, and they're utilizing in and around our already very busy ice schedule, right?
Mayor, yes, sir. So just a point of clarification, we're still in negotiations on the final agreement. And of course, that document will have to come to council for formal approval at some point in the future. So you'll see the details of that agreement sometime hopefully in the very near future. But yes, as of right now, they understand that we are fairly maxed in terms of prime ice time. And they're willing to take some of those less desirable times primarily throughout the day when we're not as busy.
Perfect. Does staff have a recommendation, Carter?
Well, so range to consider, you've got a low end of, of 3 million and you've got a high end of 4.4, which represents, you know, basically a third of the current estimate for the project. I definitely wouldn't recommend going, you know, exceeding that upper end with any commitments and so forth from council. I, as you might imagine, would prefer being on the lower end as it relates to a commitment and securing that amount of funding until that 18 month period has expired or they've raised the money. I can tell you that I can put my finger on 3 million right now. I would struggle with respect to 4 to 4.4 to try to, try to make that happen, given some of the things we've got on our horizon and the limited amount of pots of funding and that kind of thing. So the, the question I have is where would you like to be within that range? And I can give you some ideas as to how we might meet you.
Well, this is the one time that you and I don't see it the same when it comes to the finances. Because I specifically remember making a commitment to these guys to trying to fund a third of the project. And to ask a private organization to go out and raise literally what's going to amount to $10 million, roughly $9 to $10 million to do this, I feel like we really, and for a city asset that's going to eventually probably bring our subsidy well into zero, exactly. So with that said, this is a wonderful investment for us with a partner that's willing to come to the table with two thirds of money. I am of the opinion we need to be at the 4.4. And I know that breaks your heart and I know it gives you heartburn. I get it. But, but this is that, that one time that, I mean, this is literally going to help bring our subsidy to nothing, to one of the most expensive subsidies we have. I, go ahead, Kyle.
Thanks, Bruce. Carter, I, my recollection was, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought we were aiming for the same funding mechanism that we were looking at for the aquatic center roof, which was a low interest loan to the state. Is that correct or did you have a different funding mechanism in mind? How were you planning on the 3 million?
Well, the, the 3 million would be sort of a, a gathering of funds from a variety of different pots that you currently have. But the majority would be from the residual balance in Fund 150, which is a capital project fund.
But it's cash on hand. It's not borrowed money.
That, that piece would not be borrowed money at all. That's right.
The 3 million?
Well, yeah, it, yes. I, I can put my finger on 3 million right now. 4.4 I would need to struggle with once I get them a heartburn.
Struggles are good. They, they help us become stronger people.
That's right. That's true. That's true. But I, I had not really envisioned pursuing some sort of loan program in any case if we can help.
Amber?
So if we start design now, let's say, which I don't think we're going to do right, if we want them to raise at least 50% of their bid, we've probably got another couple of months. And then we've got six months of design. Are we realistically going to be in this fiscal year when we need to have this money on hand?
Mr. Mayor, counselor, I think that we would need to have at least our half of the design fee. You know, at least in this fiscal year. Do you happen to know, Zulima, how much that might be?
Mayor, councilors, so to answer your question in terms of design, we usually estimate design at about 10% of the construction cost.
1.3 roughly?
I guess it probably would be estimated at that. But we don't, I don't unfortunately have a word figure for you in terms of design. But to answer Council Pollock's question, 18 months from the first time that you all made your commitment, it's actually July of '25. And so in anticipation that they would have all of the funds together likely before that, which is what they're indicating to us, we would want the funds available.
In fiscal '24?
And we're actually, you know, indications are to us that it's very likely they would be at their halfway mark in.
Thank you, sir. Kyle?
Thanks, Bruce. So clarification, they're looking to raise $5 million here in the next couple of months?
Well, they're already at two. So, yeah, another. Well, half of theirs is only going to be at like nine. So they only need to be at 4.5. They'd have to raise another 2.5 to get to half of what they're bringing to the table. If we do the 4.4, they would only need 9 million, a little less than that actually. So they'd only need four and a half and they already have two. So they'd roughly have to come up with another 2.5. Go ahead, Lisa.
Is there a way that before we commit to anything, at least try to get some kind of a ballpark cost of the design?
Mayor, counselor, absolutely. I believe that Pat was going to engage with a few companies and I can also engage with the consultant in our study and try to get most of them. That'd be part of my homework, I'm glad you shared the info package.
Yes, please. Does anybody have a, go ahead.
I, I think I'd like to see us try to do a little better than the 3 million by being comfortable coming in somewhere between three and a half and, I mean, 4.4 if we can find it. But I, I also think that we'll do pretty well if we come up with three and a half, four for them.
If we did 3.2, that gives them a, an even 10 million bucks they got to come up with. Which is, did we promise them a third?
Mr. Mayor, we, we promised them a range.
Between three and four.
Between three and 4.4. Yeah.
Ideas?
I agree with Amber. I think we can do a little better than three. And I think it's depending on where Carter can find that stone that's got all the money underneath it.
Yeah.
To, to see. I mean, I would love to be able to give them the 4.4. But I don't know if that's feasible or not.
If we did 3.7, which is kind of halfway, that would give them a target number of 9.5. Go ahead, Kyle.
Until I knew where Carter was looking to find that money, I wouldn't personally feel comfortable going above the three. I'm happy with the three. It would depend on where the other, the excess would be coming from, in my opinion. Especially in light of, you know, all these, us not getting the deal we thought we were going to on the roof. And so, you know, we're far behind, further behind on that than we were hoping.
True.
So, yeah, I would, I would want to know more information before we committed anything above the three. But I don't know if we have that opportunity or not, but.
Well, you know, we're all speaking in the spirit of compromise here, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So you're thinking 2.2, huh?
You know, I, I, I liked what you were saying earlier about a $10 million raise that would necessitate a $3.2 million commitment, if I heard you correctly.
Yes, sir.
On the part of the, on the part of the city. That may not go quite the distance that perhaps y'all were looking for in terms of doing a little better and that sort of thing. But I would also tell you that, you know, Zulima and I were talking about the possibility of looking for money as well, maybe outside of what we know we have right now. And I don't know how successful that would be either. But if you were, I, I, I could feel comfortable committing to a $3.2 million separation of funds to hold in advance pending their successful fund drive and, and be within the spirit of what we talked about with them and, and pushing them a little from where I was talking and, and not have too hard of a time putting that together.
Well, in the event that they falter, we've got $3.2 million at our disposal to
Right.
to allocate somewhere else.
Absolutely.
Would everybody be comfortable to 3.2 with the city manager thinking he can attain that? Maybe not, albeit easily, but attain it nonetheless?
Yes, I do have one more question though.
Please.
In regards to, it looks like the naming opportunities. Am I reading this right that this is kind of a main driver for a lot of fundraising? Like allowing the naming opportunities?
Right.
So I guess I'm curious to know more about, because I know we've talked about naming opportunities at the pools and stuff like that. And so I'm just kind of curious what role we have in this, you know, because it'll be the city's facility. And so what role do we have in the naming opportunity? I'm curious about that. And then also just, I, I got nothing, you know, it, it, this is all conditional on them raising the money. So if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But this seems really ambitious for naming. We only got 400 grand from Ford at the Ford Wyoming Center for six years. So $2 million for naming rights of a sheet of ice. I don't know, it sounds ambitious. And so I'm just kind of curious what those discussions have looked like.
Thank you for that question and, and pointing that particular item out. So I just received these documents from the club yesterday. And we had engaged in a conversation with them where they solicited our permission essentially to utilize naming rights and sponsorships as, as a mechanism for, for their fundraising. What we committed to was that they could try to, to negotiate naming rights and partnerships like those for the new construction. That the city would prefer to reserve the right to solicit corporate sponsorships for the existing infrastructure. And so that is not appropriately delineated in that form. And so that's a conversation that I just need to have with them to clarify what, what we believe the agreement was and so that they can change their marketing approach. And then to consider, you know, they're, they're certainly targeting donors who have probably some personal interest because of their passion for, for hockey and ice sports to contribute to a project like this in the short term to get it constructed as a city asset into the future, then we would still have the ability to, to do agreements beyond their initial agreement for naming or corporate sponsorships.
Thank you. Follow up. I know the goal of making this a revenue or a expense neutral endeavor was based along these assumptions we were making about increasing concession sales and advertising and stuff like that. Does that impact our formula, reaching that cost neutral basis? Using naming opportunities to raise for the capital campaign? Is, is that affecting that formula that we discussed at all about trying to get rid of that subsidy?
Mayor, counselor, no, it does not. You may recall that in the rate model that I shared with you that, that got us to a zero subsidy, I had a $25,000 advertising and sponsorship, which is really a pretty small, very, very conservative revenue for corporate sponsorships or naming rights that I think is still very attainable despite what, what they may negotiate on the new construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Is everybody good with the 3.2? Mr. Bond? All right, here you go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. You're the one that's got to, got to get in the ditch and get to.
Make it happen.
Amen. Amen.
We also agreed to 50, we would deal with design fees at the 50% mark for them.
Well, Zulima, part of her homework is to get back to us on what that design cost will be. But I do believe that we did, depending on what that is, agree out of our, out of the 3.2, part of that would be to go towards the design cost. Because that 13,2 includes design. So, so that would just come out of our 3.2. And in the event that this doesn't happen, we still own a, we own a design, I guess.
At least half of us.
Yeah. We're all right. Exactly.
A design has been done.
Okay, let's move on to the Ford Wyoming Center fund subsidy.
Mr. Mayor, councilors, over the past year since we've, you know, not quite year, we're, we're six months together as a, as a, as a new council and, and as your manager. There's been a number of times where I've gotten questions about how the relationship with the event center, Ford Wyoming Center and the city works and how in fact the net operating loss payment works. Just so happens, I've gotten a lot of questions from other municipalities along these lines as well. Excuse me, pertaining to our relationship with a private operator in this, in this facility and some of the benefits we've seen and what some of the logistics are, et cetera, et cetera, features of our contract and so on. We thought it would be helpful to take a little more concentrated discussion time tonight to have these conversations. I don't know that we have a lot of, of budget implication with regard to what we really had the latitude to, you know, manipulate and dictate in terms of numbers. But I did think it would be helpful to have a conversation, particularly at the beginning of the budget year, where the numbers are on our mind and, and we're all aware of what our goals and objectives are as we move forward in the next 12 months with this very unique and innovative relationship. Two of the major features that we touched on very, very briefly last night was the idea of the net. was the idea of the net operating loss figure, as well as the property and liability figure that the event center is almost like an epicenter for in terms of those increased costs and the need to have that type of coverage. As you might imagine, we've got a lot of activity over there in that building. So I'd like you to feel comfortable asking any number of questions that you would like. The agreement can be fairly complicated, but amazingly, the budgeting really isn't that horribly complex. The contract can be. So I would say ask whatever you would like, however, in in regards to either of those theaters. And we can do our best to get you prepped and equipped for a new fiscal year with with these partners. And so if I could, Mr. Mayor, defer to Zulima to kind of kick us off, I'd appreciate that.
Once again.
Mayor, councillors, so again, it can be very confusing based on the agreement and our relationship with OBG 360 and their management of that facility to confuse the difference. And sometimes they're used erroneously interchangeably between net operating loss and and just the total fund subsidy. So net operating loss is the amount that we pay to OBG 360 for them to operate the facility at what has historically always been a loss. The benchmark for that net operating loss is $994,000. And that was based on the last three year average of what the subsidy was for the city of Casper to operate that facility in the three fiscal years prior to OBG taking over in FY17. So so that is net operating loss. We pay them. We we at first that net operating loss was always budgeted at that base mark at that base benchmark, excuse me. Over time, as as the operator has improved its performance of the operation of that facility, they have budgeted for that net operating loss to come down, the payments that we make to them to operate. And so whatever we budget now is divided over the 12 months. We cut them a check every month to make sure that they have the appropriate cash flow to keep operating the facility. So net operating loss or that payment to them becomes one aspect of the fund, certainly the biggest aspect, because as the city manager mentioned, the fund itself is actually fairly simplistic. But the total fund subsidy is comprised of that net operating loss plus any expenses that by the contract have to be borne by the city of Casper. And primarily, that is to ensure the property and all of the city owned assets within the property. And so, you know, in the FY24 budget, you know, the and I'm referring to seven slash 46 in your in your budget book, there's really only two entries for the entire fund. There was an additional entry for internal services, but really, according to the contract, any operating costs that they have for building maintenance, fleet maintenance, really needs to come out of their operations. We should not be paying that out of our fund. And that's been something that historically hasn't been practiced appropriately in poring over the contract as we were working through our renewal agreement. We learned some things that weren't necessarily jiving with the contract the way it was written. We weren't executing it quite right on both sides. And so now we're working to clean that up. So you'll notice a $27,000 entry for internal services that actually needs to be taken out. And I will work with Jill to make sure that that happens because that is for bas services or facility maintenance services, and that needs to come out of their operations.
And go where? Oh, it comes out of theirs?
Yes.
Okay.
And so they will use their net operating loss payment to pay us for our maintenance services, but the fund does not bear that expense or should not bear that expense. And so really, the only entries are in other contractual, which is in in totality, 920,000, which is what we plan to pay them in net operating loss payments over fiscal year 24. And then our insurance and bonds entry, which is nearly $179,000 to ensure that building is insured. The other point is rentals and leases. We do have a cell tower lease on that building. And so the revenue from that lease goes directly into the fund, which also helps to offset that subsidy ever so slightly. It's only 18 to 50 estimated for FY24. So again, in previous years, you may see some entries for internal services, for technology capital. There was some confusion prior that that we were responsible for their IT services, which we are in terms of networking, but they are responsible to purchase their own computers. And so that was something that we had historically done, that we said, no, contractually, you're obligated to purchase your own computer equipment. So prior year entries weren't exactly right. Now we're looking to clean that up. It does simplify the fund quite a lot. And now so we're now we're sitting at a net operating loss of 920 for FY24 compared to budgeted 950 last year. And in fact, we have only been paying them $75,000 a month, which totals 900 at the end of the fiscal year. So it may be that that 950 projected for 2023 will actually be 900. So hopefully, that helps to clear up some things and answer some questions on how that works. But if you look at the trend, their net operating loss has actually been coming down each year despite inflation and the cost of employing personnel and all of that. I think they're just really maximizing the efficiency of the operation and really structuring our touring agreements in a way that that provides very little risk and ensures that we're going to come out in the black with our touring events.
Do you anticipate with the addition of Mr. Goodman, different guidance, if you will, that continuing to decline into our favor?
Mayor, councillor, so one thing that I have definitely noticed with our new general manager is his aggressive pursuit of filling our schedule. You know, he he is very eager to have as many events up there as we can. And he is, he has been very successful and kudos to Brad Murphy because he sort of started this trend. But Kirk has continued this trend of being very successful in securing rental deals where we're guaranteed the revenue and have no risk essentially in the deal. And so, you know, risk can be good or bad, right? You know, you bear more risk, but the the benefit could be greater. And so when we do rental deals, we maybe don't have, you know, as much on the return as we could if we took some of the risk in like a co-promoted situation. But at this point, that's working well for us on most shows. When you have, you know, the journeys and the sticks and things like that, that we are pretty sure will do well in our market, we can put a little more risk out there and then gain a better reward when the show is very successful. But for some of these other shows where we're just not sure how they will do in this market, particularly with some of the newer and more diverse content that he's bringing, rental deals are really great for us.
Well, please keep in mind, I wasn't at all knocking Mr. Murphy and the job he did. I was just curious what that looked like with the change of management, if we could still continue to see that trend moving in a positive direction for the city or, you know.
Mayor, I absolutely believe we will.
Good deal. Any questions from council? It looks like you are looking for some direction. What would that be?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure that I really need any direction. You know, there's always that concern that if there's some sort of budget implication, we'd like to know that now soon and later, of course. But the reality is, we just wanted to have this opportunity for you to get this information and ask questions. And if there were direction, we'd be happy to take it.
Do we have any questions for Zulima or for Carter? Kyle?
Just the one. And this is very long term, but I don't recall us ever talking about it. What impact do you expect the YO Sports Ranch to have on our subsidy? I know we talked about some synergy there and stuff, but is it still too early in the process to even ballpark what that impact might be? Or you guys have some kind of early hunches?
Mayor, councillor, so I do think it's too early for for you to try to estimate any figures. However, anecdotally, we have had multiple discussion, we're different markets, right? They're going to attract a different customer base than we're going to attract in that they won't have the city capacity to do large sporting events where the primary purpose is spectators, right? They're going to they're going to be focused on on individuals playing with small, you know, viewer base. And so we do see a lot of opportunity for there to be synergy for those facilities to complement each other in a way that would generate more revenue for both. And so I think people are very excited for the construction of that facility and future partnership to work with and bring people to that hill.
And I believe they're breaking ground in about three weeks from the sounds of it. So.
Yeah.
Pretty exciting stuff.
We understand, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for Zulima? What did you get off easy tonight? Thank you very much. All right, now, and Fleer, I want to preface this by saying thank you for putting Andrew at the end where he needed to be so that we had his company for this evening. You're welcome, sir. Okay, amending various utility billing and water metering fees, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, this definitely has budgetary implications and will be a feature of, you know, that we carry forward into the the primary utility hearings coming later in the in the year. Andrew and his team and and customer service and finance have been working on the recommendations that you had included in your memo pertaining to a number of ancillary fees that you probably noticed have not been touched and considered in in quite some time. And so we felt it was appropriate, given some of the costs that we're seeing in in our, you know, work and so on, that we we bring this to your attention and see if you wouldn't mind giving some of this additional consideration. And so with that, I could turn some time over to Andrew and potentially Jill. I appreciate that.
Mayor, councillor, as Carter said, it was hard for me to believe that these rates have not been looked at or raised, I should say, since the early 1990s. So over 30 years, we've been stagnant while we charge for these fees. So all we're trying to do now is cost recovery, what it actually costs us to perform these services. And kudos to Brandon Coyle with Jill's team and Mike Dean with Bruce's team that have worked through these numbers to actually generate reasonable numbers for what it costs us to perform these duties. But we've got a number of them to go through. The first off is the refund deposit. It's currently at $75. Staff had originally recommended $200, which is the average bill that we're left with if somebody walks out the door and scoots out of town. This has been vetted by the CPU Advisory Board earlier this month, and they suggested, hey, if somebody signs up for automatic payments, can't we reduce that and cut it in half? And we thought that was a great suggestion. So if they sign up for automatic payments, we will reduce that refund deposit down to $100. So they have a choice. No, don't sign up. We need $200 to set up your account. Or you do, all we need is 100. So that's the first fee we're looking to to raise from the current $75 flat fee. Insufficient funds check fee when looking at no change there. It's currently $30. Maintain that status quo at $30. So no change with that fee. Late fee, after 31 days, we're looking to raise that from no charge to $20. And that's an admin fee to monitor that account and start getting that count up to your current status. After 41 days, we actually have to send somebody out. We then we start looking at shutting the water off. That's and that is the fee to send somebody out with a truck and a shut off key to actually turn that water off. So then they know, well, I guess we want water, we have to pay that bill. And please stop me if you have any questions as we go.
Amber?
Just for the public, then that means you have 30 days of being late on your bill before you will incur a fee. You can be 30 days late on your bill.
Councillor, that is correct.
Seeing some comments already online, so I just wanted to make sure we get that information out.
So next item down on the flip side, when we turn the water off, we then have to go back when they do pay the bill, we have to go back out to turn the water back on. Again, that entails somebody going out in a truck with a key and actually turning the curbs up back on. So that's another $35 turn on fee, whereas currently we're charging $10. And if we're just trying to recoup the after cost of sending somebody out to perform that service. Unsubstantiated reread of a water meter. We will occasionally get people, especially now that we're going into the irrigation months, going, whoa, there's no way I use that much water. There must be something wrong with the meter. And if and if they want us to, we will actually go pull their meter or test it in the field and run a certain amount of water through it and go, no, it's actually reading accurately. And for us to actually do go out there and perform that work, it costs us $102. Right now, we're currently charging $20. Now, it doesn't happen very often, but if there was an error in that meter, there is no charge. But invariably, they'll start turning the sprinkler system on, and they may have a leak in their sprinkler system, but that water is still going through our meter. So that's we're looking to raise that up to $102. Frozen meter. We had a lot of this when we had that minus 20, minus 30 cold snap this winter. It is the obligation of the property owner to make sure that that meter is housed in an environment where it doesn't freeze. Typically, they're in basements. If a meter freezes, we have to replace it. It is now broken. So we're looking to raise that fee from $145 to $66, which is the cost for us to go out there and replace it, plus the raw cost of the meter. Hydrant meter deposit. On construction job sites, you'll see people filling up water tanks from fire hydrants, which is allowed as long as they have a meters. Occasionally, we don't get those meters back. They walk away with the construction crew. So we're looking to raise that meter deposit from $85 to the cost of the meter. If you want to take that meter with you, you can have it, but you have to pay us for it. So. Hydrant meter rents, just to rent a meter from us is 25 bucks. No change in that fee. And hydrant meter misuse, no read. We would get people that pull a meter and they'll bring it back a week later and there's no water that's been running through it. They're trying to do the right thing, but they're not hooking the meter up to the fire hydrant, and they're still using all water. No, it's not being reported through the meter. So we're looking to raise that from currently, if there's no read on that meter, we haven't been charging them, to $300 just to recoup what we expect that charge should have been. So again, this is just a simple cost recovery. Ideally, the late fees would go down to zero. We'd be thrilled if we didn't have to deal with late fees. But we're anticipating with these changes to increase the revenue by 230,000 in that ballpark. So with that, Mayor, councillor, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I will tell you, for the people that are saying, oh, my goodness, if they're paying their bill on time, it's not an issue. And these haven't been changed for 33 years. I'm sure that was an oversight somewhere along the way.
Mayor, councillor, I think this was brought forward to council in 2015, but for whatever reason, no formal action was ever taken. I can't tell you why.
Thanks, Bruce. Unfortunate to hear, you know, it's been 30 years, so it makes complete sense to me that it needs adjusted. I just think this is the worst absolute time to consider this. I wish my predecessors would have taken care of it because this is the worst time, I feel like, to be passing these on to the consumer. I was glad to hear of the amendment to keep the utility refund deposit down to 100 if you sign up for automatic withdrawal. But I was concerned about it jumping so high up. If you can't, for one reason or another, set up withdrawal. If you're trying to move into a place by yourself, I'd be curious from Lisa, you're a landlord and I, you know, I know the climate that we're in. A lot of folks are requiring first and last month's deposit and stuff. So I'm just curious, in your experience, what is it, what does somebody have to bring to the table to move into a an apartment or? into a, an apartment or rent a house by themselves? If they're responsible for utilities, how much do they need on hand upfront first month to move in? Can you shed any light on that?
So, just to let you know, Mills already charges $200.
Okay.
And so, and then Evansville and Barnum is up there, too. And so, the, in normal costs, and it just depends on landlords and things of that nature, if you do the first month, last month, security deposit, pet fees, and all of those things, people cannot afford that. So a lot of times, it is security deposit, rent, pet fees, and things of that nature. This does fall onto a typical tenant. We do work with our tenants, though, so if they can't afford to put the water in their name, we speak with the owner, and the owner most likely will keep it in their name so that it doesn't transfer hands. Plus, the city likes that better anyway, and so they're guaranteed the money. And so then we just leave, and then we just build a tenant that way. So we do try to work with our tenants.
And then the homeowner doesn't have their water being shut off in the middle of winter either.
Right.
When somebody doesn't pay.
Right.
But they also have to come to the table with deposits for electricity, gas, you know, whatever else, right? Because all of the utilities charge those as well, right?
It depends. I mean, if you've never had utilities in your names, then you do have to put them on your bills. But just that you know that the city also will take payments. So, so, and just so does the power company, and so does the gas company. So they generally don't expect you to, you know, if you just say, can I make $50 this month? And, you know, a lot of times, they're willing to work with you. So it comes down to communication as well.
Okay, thanks. I'm just trying to put myself, you know, in the boots of somebody who is wanting to, you know, get up to that next level and start renting. I'm just trying to wrap my head, it's been a while since I was in that boat, and so I'm trying to wrap my head around how much you need to have on hand in this climate. I know rent is, it seems like, at an all-time high, and so are housing prices and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering, like, do you need to bring two grand, three grand to the table to move out on your own? And how many people are able to do that?
It would depend on the, the size of the property.
You know, if you truly look at this graph that Andrew gave us, though, other than that particular fee, the rest of these are self-induced fees that people bring upon themselves. Insufficient writing a bad check, being delinquent over 30 days on their bill, having to have their water turned off, having to have it turned back on, allowing their meter to get frozen, and then the rest of them are all hydrant meters that are used mainly by companies that are either misusing them or not returning them. So other than the initial deposit, which every other municipality is charging the same, these are all self-induced charges to people for whatever reason. Go ahead.
Yeah, I think the important thing, too, is that this is, you know, this is a cost that we're bearing, whether we change these fees or we don't change these fees. So they have to get passed on somewhere, and, you know, according to the memo, you know, the other option would be to charge it equally to all ratepayers who may not be experiencing these particular, you know, elements of using water. So we would need to increase rates by 1.5% for everyone if we aren't going to look at adjusting these rates or these fees. So to me, it makes more sense to, to adjust the fees so that the folks who are, who are, you know, dealing with these particular circumstances are the ones bearing that cost rather than...
Punishment fits the crime.
Rather than, I wouldn't say, it's not a punishment, right? It's just, it's just a, it's just a fact that it costs us as much to do that thing for you, so.
I meant, like, the insufficient check fee, things like that, that's a punishment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't really think of fees as punishments so much as it like, well, this was, this is the, the cost of that particular situation. It's what it cost us, so it's what has to cost you. So I would prefer the, the route of charging for some of these things that are relatively, you know, particular to certain situations versus saying everybody across the board has to see a rate increase of 1.5% to help us deal with these costs.
I agree. Lisa?
The non-sufficient fund check fee for $30, is that covering your basic costs?
Mayor, Counselor, I gotta believe it is, because they, they took a deep dive into these costs, and they didn't recommend any rate increase.
Jill said yes.
Yes.
That must be what the bank charged us, I assume. Did you have something else to add?
Another question. Andrew, are you able to estimate how, how often do we see frozen meters?
Mayor, Counselor, very good question. Like I said, this winter was an anomaly when we got that 35 below snap. We had crews doing nothing but, you know, thawing service lines and replacing frozen meters. Bruce, do you have a, I mean, usually, it's, it's few and far between, except this winter, we saw way, way more than average.
Does leaving the water run or drip during that time help with that?
Mayor, Counsel, it does. If you keep water moving through your service line, it'll help keep it free.
Mayor, yeah. Mayor, Counsel, it's very hard to freeze moving water.
Well, that's what I thought. But, and I, I think that was actually in our bills. I think we had put something in asking people to allow their water to run a little bit to help prevent that. Go ahead, sir.
So if I'm reading this correctly, then those, those meters, just the cost of the meter alone is $246. We were charging people $145. So every single one of those going out the door, we were, we were paying $100 bucks on every meter that went out above, not including labor to put it in.
Mayor, Counselor, that's correct.
I mean, that's unsustainable, so.
And I struggle with labor costs generally because our people are already paid by taxpayer money. They're already salaried, they're, they're fixed, and they're, they're in there. But the fact that these haven't been adjusted for 30 years, it is time to do that, to get up with the times, because we do continue to be good to our employees and give them the raises that they need and everything else. So that, that money does need to be recouped at some point, and this isn't above, it's not overly substantial, I don't feel. So, go ahead, Kyle.
Thanks, Bruce. In the CPU Advisory Board meeting minutes, Andrew, you were there, so maybe you can shed some context. Vice President Jones asked how many times deposits are forfeited. Ms. Coyle stated that there have been quite a few deposits forfeited in the last year. Did they put a number to that? And I'm curious, what are typically the circumstances of a deposit being forfeited? Is that somebody moving and just trying to skip out on their last couple months' bills?
Mayor, Counselor, I don't recall a number being put to it other than a substantial amount. But $200 will recoup most of that loss, certainly in average. When they, when we're left with a bill in hand, and they, they usually just skip town. You know, they're renters and they're tenants, and they're getting moved somewhere else. Or maybe they're moving apartments, we really don't know. Or they're putting in somebody else's name. You know, they, people play games, but we're just trying to recoup the bill that we're left with.
Thanks, Andrew. Follow-up if I could, Mayor?
Thank you.
The water turn-on fee, it says it excludes new accounts, transfers, or emergency turn-ons after being offered less than 24 hours. Could you shed some light for me? What circumstances, other than those that are excluded, under what circumstances is somebody needing the water turned back on?
Other than excluding new accounts, transfers, and emergency turn-ons after being off for less than 24 hours? Mayor, Counselor, obviously, if someone's had their water turned off for non-payment, that would require us to go then turn it back on.
Once they pay.
Once they pay, right?
Okay. And then one last follow-up, if I could? Thanks. That makes sense. I noticed in these meeting minutes, it was mentioned the fact that number of utility accounts drops in the winter due to snowbirds. And I do know there's quite a few people that do that here. I was curious, the opinion of yourself or any other city staff in the room. What impact, if any, does that have, positive or negative? Folks leaving in the winter, turning their water off, coming back and turning it back on, do you see that having any sort of impact, again, positive or negative, on maintaining our water infrastructure in the city?
Mayor, Counselor, no. I mean, very, I can't think of an impact.
Okay, thank you.
Lisa?
I just wanted to answer a question for Kyle. So before the city turns off the water on any house, they put a 72-hour notice on the door, letting you know that you've got 72 hours before the water is being shut off. So they're well aware that they're in that period of time.
Do we, we do charge our snowbirds, right, to turn on and off?
Mayor, Counselor, we do.
Yeah, okay. Well, it sounds like consensus, we don't want to charge everybody the 1.5. So this fee schedule seems like it's, it's, I'm assuming that's where we want to go? Is everybody on board and okay with the new fee schedule? I, I'm behind it. I mean, 32 years since we've done it, and none of these seem to be overly substantial. Most of them are geared towards individuals who have put themselves in this situation, if you will. So, are we...
Could I have one last question?
Yeah, please.
Again, I totally understand the need for recovering our costs and everything like that. It's just the worst timing. I'm really disappointed past councils haven't addressed this. Lisa, you had mentioned, I think, some sort of financing that's available to people could...
That's not true.
Okay. So they have to come up with $200 or set up automatic withdrawal to get water at a new place of residence?
That's right. Yeah, the city doesn't accept payments on the bills.
They, you will work with them, though, on their bill, though, correct?
On the bill, but not on the deposit. So if you were a new, if you were a new customer and you came in to get water service, we would charge you the deposit before we would turn the water on.
So you could make payments on it, but the water's not going to get turned on until it's paid?
Which isn't helpful if you pay it every, your payment every month. You need to pay that deposit upfront to get water.
Right.
One more follow-up. I probably have, I have an idea of some agencies that would probably help, but maybe you can speak with certain organizations that help with things like initial deposits on utilities? Are you aware of what resources are available to people if they're struggling to come up with that?
We, we have a brand-new one within the city, I believe, correct, Carter? If I'm wrong, but it somewhat matches LEAP and like they do with the power and the gas. Can you help me here?
Right. It, actually, what is that acronym?
It's the LEWAP program.
LEWAP.
It's the Low Income...
Water Assistance Program.
Water Assistance Program.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, and that's brand-new, and it's just started so people could start reaching out and utilizing that if they need help with their bills and things like that. And I believe that was, was that a city-instituted, Eric? Did we?
We just discussed it.
Yeah. Mayor, Counselors, yeah, that's, it's a program. It's through the state, and the city has adopted it, participates in it. I actually talked to Randy, and I think as of 3 o'clock today, we had 290 residents already signed up.
And I'm going to keep rattling these follows off. Is that on our bill, like, guiding people to that resource? Is that on our utility bill?
Mayor, Counselor, I, that I can't answer.
It is not. You had asked me this question before. We do not actually list it on the bill, and I do not believe it covers deposits. It may not cover a deposit. However, if the customer needs help and they let us know, we can give them a series of resources to be able to reach out.
Go ahead. And Mayor, Counselor, I think some of the parameters are actually for people that are in distress. So if you're reconnecting or restart the service, or you're looking at losing the service, then that's when this assistance can kick in. I don't believe that it provides assistance on the deposit.
Thank you.
But I can tell you, it's no different than electricity or anything else. If you're, you know, if you're new, never had service, or have had prior, not upstanding service, they will charge you a deposit. Without it, they will not turn your power on. So it's, it's very much in line with all the other utility companies. Yes?
On that note, does it, does it transfer with you if you move to a new house and you already have the account established, you have to pay again? Or is it just on a user basis?
So I believe how it works is you pay your deposit, you get your water turned on. If you're there for a year and you have good payment, they would refund that deposit. If you move from house to house, it would be basically like refunding it and then re-establishing it. So it would just transfer.
Okay.
But once you've had a year of good payment history, then you don't need your deposit anymore.
That is correct. If you then got into a situation where you had difficulty paying again, then we could reinstitute that deposit if required.
And I believe that's the way the power company does it as well. Power companies, gas, electric, I E. Any other questions?
Yep.
Kyle?
Thanks. Again, CPU Advisory Board meeting minutes, so probably Andrew. Ms. Coyle stated that if a new customer supplies a letter of recommendation from a previous utility, no deposit is required. Could you give me some context for that statement?
Mayor, Counselor, I think if they can show good credit history, good, good renter history, or good ownership history, we will waive that deposit fee as well.
What can we do to make sure people are aware of that, other than, I'll refer them to page 10, page 10 of our info packet from last week, but I'm curious what more we can do so folks are aware of that.
So I am hoping that once we get our fee schedule adjusted, that we will do some type of public information with our communications team to let the public know.
Like, put it in their bill or something like that?
Yes, sir.
Because, did I also read that our fee schedule's never been made public? Did I read that in CPU Advisory Board meeting minutes?
Mayor, Counselor, I think that's, it's not easy to find. I'll just put it that way. How's that?
I'll take it.
Unless you're, unless you like reading the Muni code.
Well, I don't believe that's due to a lack of transparency. Is it just a lack of...
Initiative.
Initiative, yeah, putting it out there, I guess.
Lack on the website that's user-friendly, what you're working on?
You know, to this day, there's a big pothole on the corner of one of the streets I turn on. This is off-topic, I apologize, but I still don't, can't figure out how to get on 311 to report it, and I even have the address.
Oh, man.
Yeah, I'm having a hell of a time. So I don't know how.
I'll show you.
I'm, I'm the literate computer, though.
My work order has been completed, so...
We'll get with you after this meeting. Back on topic, any further questions for...
No. It makes me feel better that if somebody can set up H, ACH withdrawal, that it will keep it at 100, and it also makes me feel better that if they can provide some sort of letter of good standing or good credit with past utilities, that they could get it waived. I just want people to make sure those opportunities are available to them.
Well, we, we do have every right and need to recover from people that don't want to pay their bills. It is not up to every other taxpayer to, to fund that for them and to, you know, water, power, those are all privileges that we work for every day, and, and the general community shouldn't have to pay for somebody that doesn't want to pay their bills. I just don't think that's fair either. So with that, I will ask for a thumbs up on the fee schedule. Okay? There you go. Resolution done.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have a pothole I need to discuss with you before you leave here today. Okay. With that said, I appreciate the last two nights with all of you. It's, it's been a lot of stuff to get through. We have done it expertly and diligently. For that, I appreciate the professionalism and, and the diligence that everybody portrayed. Mr. Bond, thank you for being here tonight.
Around the table.
Yep. We're getting ready to start right now. And with that said, Mr. Bond, I will start with you for counsel around the table, if you have anything to offer this evening.
Okay. Okay. Just a couple of things. I, I, there is a pothole that is the bane of my existence on first, I'll, I'll report it on the app. I can do that.
Well, when you report yours, I'm going to give you an address. Put mine in there, too, will you?
All right. You give me, give me the location.
I'm going to, thank you.
All right. All right, I'll do that. No, but just, I just want to say thank you to Carter and the staff for the extreme amount of work on the budget and all the questions and information you've provided over the last couple of days, and I just, I just appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bond, I appreciate it. Lisa?
I have nothing.
Well, well...
I said mine last night.
Okay. Mr. G, you always have something.
I got one thing. Not much has happened in the past 12 hours, 24 hours, but we did have a homelessness coalition meeting today where we were presented a rough draft of kind of our overarching mission statement and some of the underlying goals. Don't sink loses here, because I was hoping you'd fill in the gap for me, but some of the underlying goals were the importance of data collection, the fact that we just do not have much data to go off of. We need that for our police department to be able to focus their efforts. We need it to, when we're crafting ordinances, we need to have a really good idea of how many homeless individuals we have and how many beds we have available to them. So there's quite a few data points that are really important for us to have when we're seeking funding or trying to craft ordinances, and so that's going to be a really important
a really important drive out of this group. Another sub-goal is ordinance review and amendments. We've been talking about adjusting our camping ordinance along some other things. Continuum of Care, which is going to be really important for pulling in federal funding, especially from Hodges and some other places. And then there was a fourth one. I forget what it was, and I don't have that paper in front of me, but...
Financial resources.
Financial resources, yes. And so this group is taking the directive that I believe Council gave them several weeks ago in, in regards to making sure that we're addressing this in a comprehensive and holistic way, that we're not just trying to arrest our way out of it. Message is loud and clear. Nobody in this group supports that sort of philosophy. They very much want it to be a very comprehensive solution. I believe they're coming to update us on June twenty-seventh, so we'll hear from that group then, kind of an update on all of the work that's been done so far and kind of what the future goals are. There is a Downtown Casper Business Association meeting at the Chamber tomorrow at nine, and I believe this is going to be the topic of conversation I was planning on attending, if anyone else is available and interested. I might suggest you go down there. I know the Chamber is interested in supporting downtown businesses through trying to help finance things like increased security and/or surveillance downtown. So it sounds like the Chamber's getting pretty heavily involved as well, which I'm glad to hear. So lots of things happening on that front. I guess stay tuned for that presentation at the end of next month. Everything will be made a little bit more clear to the rest of everyone else that hasn't had the opportunity to be joined in those meetings. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Randy?
I don't have anything.
What?
I was here yesterday.
Ever?
Nothing to me.
I don't have anything either. I, I do, I, Flor, I wanted to ask you while we were still here, there were some caveats that we put on some of the nonprofits as far as getting us some information. Do we know, did we reach out to them? How's that going?
Here, I'm, I'm with Council. Yes, I reached out to them, and I gave them all the primary amounts and then what the requirements were. So if there were any, it included that, the ones that needed financials. I have received a few of the, they've sent in their budget information for some of them. So they're getting that information. So yes, it has been communicated.
Okay, good. So I'm assuming at a future work session, we will go through those and...
If that's how Council wants to do it, we can also send it in the...
I believe so. Yeah, I believe we did want to look into that, make sure that, that they were, if you will.
So, Mr. Mayor, it sounds like I'm hearing a request for an additional work session on one cent allocations to nonprofits.
I just think we need to make sure all our ducks are in a row like we asked.
An additional session or just an agenda item?
Just an agenda item. Not an actual work session. Just a, an item during a work session.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Agenda item, right.
Correct, yes, sir. Yep.
In particular, shouldn't, aren't we just more interested in, like, who hasn't supplied us the information that we asked for? Isn't that...
Yeah, I, I think that's probably more appropriate, yes.
So maybe more along those lines of who hasn't complied?
Yeah, I think that's probably more appropriate, because we, we only put that caveat on the ones that we felt we needed to. So that's, that's probably more fair, if you could. Other than that, that's all I have. We are off for the next couple of weeks. We are done with this building for the next thirteen, fourteen months. We will be at the Lyric. If you are on the leadership meetings, those will be over at the Business Center in Carter's office, or in the conference room up there on the mezzanine floor. All work sessions, council meetings will be at the Lyric. You are welcome to park in the, parking's very limited over there at the Lyric. I would prefer we keep that open for any public that would like to come or staff. So if we could park in the parking garage at the Casper Business Center, it's a very short walk. Do not park in the parking lot. Get a ticket. Again, again.
Again?
No, I didn't. My wife did, though, because she stopped there and got a ticket. Republic's on it, man. You can't be messing around with those guys. So, anyway, June fourth is our next regularly scheduled meeting, I believe?
Sixth.
Sixth? Thank you. That's a Tuesday. That'll be at the Lyric at five-thirty for a pre-meeting and six o'clock meeting in, in the movie theater. And hopefully by then, Pete, I'm assuming we'll have lights and sound and all the good stuff we need.
We're doing all that work.
You are the man. Akito Pete is on it. So thank you for joining us online tonight. We are done here. Enjoy your time off. Couple of weeks is always nice in the summertime.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.